Guys, okay? I can't.
Okay, I'm back. Sorry.
Okay, you ready?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, September 22. This is the Regular Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting. It is 6:32. Councillors present are Bordelain, Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, and Zepary. Councillors absent are Obrey and Parker, who is at a TVCCA meeting. She'll be joining us later. And I am here as well. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven councillors present. Calendar and Communications, Councillor Baumgartner.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Councillor Franco.
I had an enlightening meeting this week with the Quantic Bridge Fire District, a few of their board members, and with the fire chief. I do have a list of questions that I would like to discuss with the town manager. Should I wait until a different time for that?
So communicate what you know at this point, and then discussion, perhaps under other, no, I can't do that under other business. Why don't you relay the questions? I'm not sure if the manager is prepared to answer them right now, though.
So one of the questions I had was, what is, can you give us an update on what is going on with the fire training facility that's over located at the annex, behind the annex? And what might be holding that up specifically?
One big thing is the budget. Remember, it was one of the items for the CIP last year, and as we cut, there were still some questions, I think, on it, too. I think they were reviewing an agreement also, and they were, they were among the different fire departments, and they hadn't got back to me yet on that agreement either. So there's a couple of things, that agreement, as well as the funding.
There's an agreement. And then, so I took a ride down to Sutton Park this past week, and I had, because I had seen something on Facebook, they had planted numerous trees there, a lot of trees. And so I have a few questions on that regarding to, like, was there a program that they planted these trees? Because I think on the video that I saw on Facebook, there was deep, and had that been, did that go through us? Because I don't recall that. But I mean, it might have been a program or a grant of some sort.
I think we basically gave permission to a group to plant them. It was a grant, but it wasn't our grant.
Okay.
So it didn't have to come through us.
Well, one of my questions is that there's the Sports Field Task Force, and they are looking at that spot to possibly re, change things around and possibly put three fields there, and where they plant all those, in their diagram would be a parking lot. And that's where all the parking would be. So I'm sort of, and I believe, I don't know, I just, I'm, I'm not sure if people are like, like, we're getting the right information to bring back to committees on some sorts, or if there's a way to communicate this.
Parks and Rec are the ones working on that. So do you think they would know?
Okay.
I'll ask Mark about it.
All right, thank you. When I also went up to the new middle school, I was over there, and it looks very nice. I brought my son, and we drove around down by Grasso and the middle school and up to the Fitch, and he had thought it looked like, like a college campus, he said. And if you take them all combined. So one of the things I had noticed, there were some things that aren't quite finished. Who takes care of some of those items that maybe are on their checkoff, for a final checkoff?
Well, the contractor, we work on the charge until it's done, then we turn it over. The kind, there's a variety of issues. Some are supply delays. They have to redo the gym floors because it was done incorrectly. But it'll get done, and then we'll be the ones checking. Public Works will work with the contractors.
All right.
And of course.
I'm sorry, it was just like, the main entrance, like, some of the tar looked like, you could see big giant tire imprints on it, like something, you know, which I don't, you know, I think there's an issue there.
Right.
And then, like, the entrance roofing, it looked very not finished, maybe. I'm not sure. But I was just wondering, like, how was the, how would that process go?
Yeah, they have a check long, they have a list of things that they go through and has to be fixed.
Okay, thank you. I did send you this past weekend, I believe it was. There was an accident with the Amtrak bridge over by Doncaster. The overpass, a truck had gone under it and took the whole top of the van off with its back bay door. So we had, as a council, passed a motion related to that overpass, and can you enlighten us on maybe the, like, where we stand on that, if you have any insight to that?
Well, we didn't really go anywhere with, as far as I know, with that, because that involves Amtrak, and, you know, it's a train bridge, involves the federal government. It's not really, some, all we could do is send a letter of encouragement. It's not, it wouldn't be our project, but Greg could probably add on if there's any, he, Greg's on the line here, if there's anything else. But it's not really, it wouldn't really be our project.
Okay, because I know with that, there was some kind of state funding, or some kind, something of that nature, and I was just wondering where we stood.
Mr. Hanover, are you there?
Yes, John, I can add.
You're familiar with where the truck hit?
Yeah, that's the Quantic Road overpass that's hit quite a bit, actually. We do have money, I think it's, I want to say, like, $30,000 in the CIP to do an engineering study of either raising the bridge or lowering the road to increase the clearance there. To be honest, it's not a high priority project with us right now, so it's kind of been, just been idle for a year or so.
Okay.
We do, we do have funds to look at it. You know, we did have an engineering study done a number of years ago, and to raise that bridge, because of the grade that the trains need, you're going, like, literally miles in each direction and raising the tracks up.
Right.
It's not a cheap project.
Right. I just didn't know where we stood, because I know this had come up, like you said, probably over, like, a year ago, maybe, so. And with the accident, it brought it back to light, and I wanted to follow up on it. Also, sorry, so many questions, but I'm went to Jersey Mike's, the new Chipotle, you know, Chipotle in Jersey Mike's over there, and I also experienced the massive traffic backup onto Route 12 due to the Chipotle drive-through. What I did notice was there were many open parking spaces, but everybody's in line at the drive-through. So is anything being done about this? Because, like, I know other people have said it, and I'm just going to repeat the same thing. I really think somebody's going to get hurt over there. There's going to be accidents of some sort, and I don't know if this has, I mean, did they do the road study? Did they not, did this not pop up on a road study that this might back up into Route 12 on a, you know, on a busy state highway, basically?
You know, the same thing's happening at McDonald's, Burger King, sometimes Wendy's. During the day, McDonald's, I often see five or six cars down the street lining up. It's COVID in takeout. People are just used to doing takeout now. You know, we, we've, you know, we've talked about internally, I'm not sure how much we can do at this point, but I don't, I think they're more successful than they thought. They'll get it a little bit down under, I hear they're really slow on doing the takeout, so hopefully they'll get that process going and alleviate it some, and then encourage people to actually park. I'm hearing it's much quicker to go inside than to order in advance.
All right. And, well, that's one of my questions, is the drive-through was so long, but there were so many empty parking places, and is there anything that could be done about that? I mean, are we working with them? Maybe the town and the owners to see if they could come up with a better system, maybe? I mean, they had somebody opening the door saying, "Hi, welcome to Chipotle," but that's all he was doing.
Right. I'll, I'll talk to planning about it.
All right, thank you. And then finally, I just want to say that we had lost a Groton resident this past week due to COVID, and I wanted to send my deepest condolences. Thank you.
Excuse me? Can I add something to that?
Obrey has joined us. We are just starting communications, Councillor Obrey. So we were just, we were just starting communications going around the table, so we'll have you up as soon as Councillor Heed reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Heed?
Yes, I have nothing to report, but I do want to call out and congratulate the Groton Town Police Officers Anthony Lucero and Marvel Bennett for their recognition by Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, for their efforts of enforcement of driving while intoxicated, or not driving while intoxicated, as the case may be. And also want to note, our police department was second in the state, so that's, that's pretty amazing. I just want to give them a shout out for that, for a job well done, and, you know, just, this, I think, is a really important issue. You know, I can speak from firsthand experience. I walk around the town, and I pick up Nipps bottles constantly, so we know what's happening, and it shouldn't be. So, you know, kudos to them for, for making the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Heed. Councillor Obrey?
I was just going to mention, we had a conversation with John Reiner last week about the congestion down at Tollgate Road, and he mentioned that they had planned a meeting with the owners to talk with them, so I, I think there may be some information that would be forthcoming. They're, you know, they're aware of it, they're trying to do what they can, but I think the state approved the entrances the way they are. To me, it was pretty poor planning, and I, I think we will have an accident there without any doubt at all. It's, so I hope that they follow up and try to do something. I think they need another entrance up a little further. For what it's worth. Meetings, yes. We had a beautification meeting. We're going forward with October 3rd being a day to sell bulbs at the drive-up at the Groton Senior Center. And we're hoping to put out bulbs that we'll see throughout the city and town in the spring. So if you can support us, come on down between 9:00 and noon, we'd really appreciate it. Bring $15.
Could you just say the date again, please?
October 3rd, sadly, October 3rd, 9:00 to 12:00. And if I could just remember the name of the bulbs. Rachel, what's the name of the bulbs?
They're King Charles Daffodil bulbs.
Thank you. So we're hoping to make that a flower you will see throughout Groton. And also, John, I got your message about the fact that the sign had gone down at the end of 117 in Route 1, and so I'm just trying to find some time to talk with Paige and see if we're going to be putting up the new sign and what the date might be for that. So I think that's about all for right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Obrey. Councillor Bordelain? I just, one second, I just wanted to know, Councillor Parker has joined us. Thank you. Councillor Bordelain, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just want to line my remarks with Councillor Franco in regards to the the field where the trees were planted at the park. There is a task force that is looking, you know, I think it would be, I believe it would be helpful to have communication. I understand we don't have to vote on the funds, but it would be nice to know, since we're communicating towards, you know, for the town.
Just as a reminder, I did put, send that to the council, a map of where those are going, I believe, in a weekly report.
Councillor Bordelain? I think she might be having internet difficulties. Councillor Bordelain? Okay, we can come back.
Did everybody hear me that I did send that map to people before it was planted?
Yes.
Everybody should have had that.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelain? Okay, we will come back, and we will go on to Councillor Melendez.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Zepary?
I played a little hooky this afternoon, and my wife and I went out to lunch. And in the process, we drove along gravel street in Mystic. Gravel Street was flooded from the river. I don't know if this was an apogee tide, or if it was an effect of the hurricane that's in the Gulf of Maine pushing eastward winds, or if it's a manifestation of the general rise in sea level. But I think it's worth reporting and referring to our Sustainability Committee. That should be one of the sites that we'd like to take some remedial action in, because if it's not flooding because of the rise in sea level today, it will be.
Thank you, Councillor. Okay, we will go back to, I don't see Councillor Bordelain back with us, so we'll go back to Councillor Parker, who has joined us after the TVCCA meeting. So, Councillor Parker?
Good evening. Just the TVCCA meeting, and I did attend one of the DEI subcommittee meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just, Mr. Burt, is Councillor Bordelain in the attendees? Trying to get over? Do you see her anywhere?
She's not under attendees.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and take my turn, then we'll come back for hands. Okay? So I attended the Gulf Advisory Board meeting on the 14th of September, and they've had quite the summer. It's been very busy, and that is a good thing for them. They are working on replacing trees over on the 11th Fairway, and they've consulted with the town arborist, and they're in the process of selecting those trees, and will be figuring out the best placement for them. There was a request to ask our state delegation for possible, one of those brown signs on the Interstate 95 near the exit to advertise the golf course. So they're considering making that request. They are working on promoting their social media presence and increasing the likes. They are also working on increased online booking, and they've been collecting a lot of new email addresses, which will help them with their promotions. They conducted a survey. The survey results are out there regarding various aspects of the course, pace of play, facilities, et cetera. There was one issue with the public using the practice facilities, and for years, it hadn't been enforced that it was only supposed to be for playing members. So if you either had a greens fee for that day, or you had a membership, those are the people that are supposed to be using the practice facilities, and they had been kind of overlooking it. And it is because of COVID, and that's really the only sport that was going for a long time, a lot more people were showing up at the golf course, and they had some, a handful of complaints. So they're looking at addressing that. The next meeting will be October 5th. I met with Mr. Reagan, who owns the Bennys Plaza, and Mr. Quinn from Quinn and Harry, and Mr. Burt, and they are going to be sending the council a proposal, an idea, that they would like us to endorse for publicizing Mystic and tourism in our area, including Groton proper. So we don't have a date on when that will be coming to us, but you should be seeing that. I'm guessing this fall at some point. We have, there's lots of tree stuff this evening. We received a letter of congratulations from Senator Blumenthal, because Groton has earned the designation of being Tree City USA from the Arbor Day Foundation for the year 2019. And this is an ongoing honor that our town receives, so that's very lovely to have that distinction. And I wanted to offer my condolences to the family of Dolores Harrell. Dee is a longtime RTM member, served with her for many, many years on the RTM. She was a true believer, excuse me?
A hot sketch.
She was a true believer in Little D democratic ideals. She truly believed in process of democracy, and she was, as I said online, she was a firecracker. She was, she was feisty. She was a ballerina when she was young. She was a great, great grandma. She was an amazing woman, and she will be missed. So my condolences to the family. Okay, Councillor Franco, you have your hand. Oh, Councillor Franco, and then Councillor Obrey.
Thank you. I was wondering if Mr. Bronk would take himself off of mute and have a little, maybe answer a question for me. I had spoke to Mr. Bronk a while ago about possibilities of what economic development could do for some of our small businesses in Groton. With COVID going on, and so many of our businesses struggling, and with the future struggles that are coming, and I was wondering if maybe Mr. Bronk could talk to us, is there a possibility of us doing a joint venture? A town with Step?
Hello?
Hello.
Can you repeat the question?
Is there a?
Last line.
I'm sorry. Is there a possibility of Groton doing a joint venture, or somehow teaming up to help small businesses in our community with all the struggles, struggles they're having? With, I believe it's Step?
With, you referring to CEDIS, possibly?
Maybe. It's about having, like, economic development with funding from the state, possibly. Didn't they receive, like, a big grant, and maybe we could help put them in touch with the businesses that may be in need, or help spread the word to our businesses locally?
That's your sector, age?
Oh, sector? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that, that's what I was envisioning, that you, you probably meant sector, because
I'm sorry, yes, that was probably it.
They, they serve as our regional economic development agency, similar to the COG that serves mainly our transportation and land use function, but SECTOR did receive a significant grant from the federal government, and they are hiring staff basically to be a small business liaison and to help problem solve. They also receive funding for, I believe, some small business loans, and this is fairly recent. We do participate with SECTOR, and we have really close working relationships with Nancy Cowser, their executive director, and we always have had a strong partnership on a number of different levels, and we actually served on the panel, I'm not sure if they're done with the interviews yet, to hire that liaison to help small businesses. So we're certainly interested in working with them. And I may have referred to in the past when the council had asked, does it make sense for Groton to create its own small business loan program? My recommendation at the time was that SECTOR has funding that was forthcoming. This is exactly what I was referring to. I think it's best for us to point business needs towards SECTOR when it comes to finances, and now that they're going to have this additional staff person, we definitely want to partner with them, as we always have, and work regionally and locally to assist Groton businesses. I'm not sure if that answers everything you were seeking, but my answer is yes.
Is there anything the council can do to help facilitate that?
I, I think allow the staff to work with SECTOR. We always do work with SECTOR, but knowing that you support us proactively and partnering, I think that, that helps. I don't think it requires any vote. It doesn't require any additional funding. The local economic staff, economic development staff, partnering with the regional economic development staff is something we do naturally, anyway.
Right. Yeah, and we don't actually tell the staff what to do, so. So I was just wondering if there was anything as a council we could do to help facilitate, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
Councillor Obrey, Councillor Bordelain is back online, and I just wanted to see if she had anything else to add, because she had frozen. Councillor Bordelain, did you have anything else to add before your internet difficulty ensued?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. Thanks for talking.
You're welcome. Councillor Obrey, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest that perhaps locally, with what Rachel was suggested, it might be a good idea if we had a meeting with, sorry about that, if we had a meeting with the mayor of the city and their utility director to clarify what Mayor Hedrick had mentioned about collection of electric bills. I didn't quite understand when he was talking about it. He said that they were beginning a process, and it might be good if we knew how that was going to affect businesses in the area. I can't keep my hands to myself here. So anyways, it was just a thought that maybe some conversation would be good. I, I know that John and, and the mayor meet regularly, and maybe then we could bring, bring them on, you know, to talk with us.
Mr. Burt, do you think you could, next time you meet with Mayor Hedrick, you could get some clarity on what Councillor Obrey is asking, please?
Yeah, I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Okay, we are on to approval of minutes. Councillor Baumgartner? This is on page two, please. Councillor Baumgartner, you're muted.
Mayor, can you hear me?
I can now, yes. Could you move acceptance of the minutes, please?
Yes. So I will make a motion to approve the September 8, 2020 meeting minutes. So moved?
Second, Parker.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Parker. Any discussion on the minutes? There was one correction that was made. I think an email was sent out about that. Anybody have anything on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approval of 2026-38, September 8 minutes, please say aye.
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 Be opposed? Any abstentions? We are at nine councillors, so we are nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstention. So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to new business, 5A, 2026-37, complete streets policy. This begins on page 10 of your packet. There's quite a bit of material here. There is no motion. This is informational. And with us this evening, we have Brian Kent, and he is here to talk to us about complete streets. Mr. Kent? You have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. So you should be looking at a slide, that's the first slide in this presentation, what are complete streets? Can you all see that?
No, it is not up yet, sir. Hold on one second. I think Mr. Burt is arranging that. Yes, it's visible now. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Burt.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Brian Kent. I'm a principal landscape architect with the firm Kent and Frost located in Mystic. I am also vice chair of the Connecticut Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. But tonight, I am here the capacity as president of the bike and pedestrian advocacy organization Bike Groton. And what I'd like to do is introduce you to the concept of complete streets. And I have a presentation that I'm going to go through fairly quickly, and in the interest of brevity and completeness, some of this involves reading from some of the slides and my notes. This, this description of complete streets you're about to hear is the most comprehensive description that I have found yet. It was produced by the United States DOT, and it states, "Complete streets are designed and operated to enable safe use and support ability for all users. Those include people of all ages and abilities, regardless of whether they are traveling as drivers, bicyclists, or public transportation rider. Concept of complete streets encompasses many approaches to planning, designing, and operating roadways and rights of way, with all users in mind, to make the transportation network safer and more efficient. Complete streets policies are set" Complete streets policies are set at the state, regional, and local levels and are frequently supported by roadway design guidelines. Complete streets approaches vary based on community context. So the complete streets Groton may consider will be different from what almost any other community nearby might consider because of our unique conditions. But they may address a wide range of elements such as sidewalks, bike lanes, bus lanes, bus stops, crosswalks, median islands, accessible pedestrian signals, curb extensions, modified vehicle travel lanes, streetscape, and landscape treatments. Complete streets reduce motor vehicle related crashes and pedestrian risk as well as bicycle risk when well-designed bicycle specific infrastructure is included. They can promote walking and bicycling by providing safer places to achieve physical activity through transportation. The streets of our cities and towns are an important part of our communities. In fact, they are the largest amount of publicly owned land in many communities. They allow children to get to school and parents to get to work. They bring together neighbors, draw visitors to neighborhood stores. These streets ought to be designed for everyone, whether young or old, on foot or on bicycle, a car, or a bus. But too often, they are designed only for speeding cars or creeping traffic. Connecticut is no exception. Groton is no exception. For a long time, the design and maintenance of our streets has been dominated by the interest of automobiles. The benefits of complete streets to local communities are large. I'm going to go through them. The, the main principles are listed here. They are safety, health and environment, strengthening economies, cost efficiencies, providing choices for people to have different forms of transportation. They also address inequities in communities. First and foremost, safety is the most important benefit of embarking on a complete streets program. More than 40% of pedestrian fatalities occur where there is no available crosswalk. We all know of places in our community where people are forced to cross, but there is no safe crossing. Where there are even sidewalks ending and another sidewalk picking up across the road and no provision, no painted crosswalk, no signal at all. And when a pedestrian is involved in a vehicular crash, their chance of being killed goes up exponentially as the speed of the vehicle goes up. You can see here when a person is involved in a crash with a car going 20 miles per hour, their probability of surviving is tremendous compared to when the car is going faster. Very directly, the evidence shows slower speeds will improve safety. So complete streets endeavor among other things to calm traffic. A group of people who benefit exponentially are children. Children need dedicated safe spaces for bicycling and walking. This will help them be active and gain independence. Many children are overweight or obese due to sedentary lifestyles and the lack of exercise opportunities. The built environment, including our streets, affects children's ability to be active. In addition to recreational activity, what we refer to as incidental activity is an important component in healthy living. Incidental activity includes biking or walking to school or to a friend's house or to a park. And so complete streets provide safe space for walking and bicycling by adding sidewalks, bike lanes, or other paths on appropriately slowing vehicles. The growing body of evidence links moderate physical activity and aerobic exercise to improve academic performance, mood, and cognition. Older adults also benefit. In less than five years, nearly one in five of us will be 65 or older, including myself. According to a recent survey, about half of all non-drivers over the age of 65 would like to be able to get out more but feel confined. Complete streets equal better design for older folks and allows them to stay active in their communities. By routinely responding to the needs of people on foot and bicycles, walking, bicycling, and driving will be safer and easier for everyone. People of all ages and abilities, especially our older residents, will have more options when traveling to the store or to visit family or friends. Many longtime residents want to be able to live out their lives in their homes. In the planning world, this is referred to as aging in place. You've probably heard that phrase. People in Groton would like to be able to age in place, but there are barriers, including the barriers for transportation. So complete streets can help make aging in place possible. People with disabilities benefit from having streets and areas along the streets that allow them to have more mobility. According to 2010 census data, 19% of the population have some type of disability and about 12% has a severe disability. This includes individuals with auditory, visual, and cognitive disabilities, dementia, mental illness, or that are unable to live independently. Complete streets allow everyone to travel to and from work, school, and other destinations with the same level of safety and convenience, whether or not they have mobility, vision, or cognitive disabilities. Complete streets also help people who are coping with temporary disabilities as well as those pushing strollers, pulling wheeled groceries or luggage, or managing large packages. Benefits to health of that kind of incidental activity, as I referred to earlier, are quite clear. For many years, the CDC has been recommending that the built environment can improve a community's overall health if there are places to safely walk and bike and engage in those kinds of physical activities, especially when they're combined with daily routine errands and trips. This approach benefits the economy of a local community in very important ways. First of all, to attract young workers to high-skill jobs, a community should endeavor to have high-quality transportation and a high quality of life. I know that's a theme that has been at the forefront here. The businesses that encourage active transportation also attract young professionals. A recent study published this year called "The National Study of the Economic Impact of Street Improvements" looked at a variety of changes that have been made to central business streets in six American cities across the continent. What they found with respect to this topic is that in the central business districts that built bike lanes, economic activity increased over those that did not. Even when parking spaces were replaced by bike lanes, the net impact was greater economic activity. The reason for that is explained by a different study done in Portland, Oregon, where it was found that people who arrive to a business on bikes spend less per visit. Makes sense. They don't carry as much as you do in a car, but they visit more often, resulting in more money spent overall per month. And when a community does simple things like in this lower right-hand photograph, like take one street-side parking space and put up what's known as a bike corral that can allow up to 20 bicycles. You're basically substituting one person's shopping trip for that of up to 20 people. You can see where the economic impact can be concentrated even further. And in a place like, like New England, where in the wintertime this sort of thing might not be used that much, it can be removed. So it can be a seasonal improvement that helps the local businesses tap into that, 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 that business that bike customers can provide. Another benefit that isn't so obvious, but makes a lot of sense when you think about it. Because families spend a lot of their budgets on transportation. When you think about the cost of owning an automobile, all the ancillary expenses. In a low-income household, it can be up to 55% of their budget spent on transportation to giving people more options to get from place to place, give them more control over their expenses. Another benefit to complete streets that isn't necessarily obvious is that landscaping and stormwater retention and filtration can be incorporated into the design of streets so that the environment is enhanced. We know that a third of all greenhouse gas emissions comes from transportation. So if we can reduce reliance on the automobile in our local communities, it can help the air quality there. Now I'm going to shift gears a little bit and talk to you briefly about complete streets policies. This is, this is a specialization of mine at Kenton Frost. And I've prepared complete street policies for Connecticut communities. The reason or the benefit of those is to ensure that the entire rideaway is planned, designed, structured, operated, and maintained to provide safe access for all users. So why would the town of Groton consider adopting a policy? First, to change practice so that the needs of all road users can be incorporated into everyday transportation planning and design. Implementing complete streets is as much a process as it is an outcome. It's about planning ahead for your vision. It is also about operations and maintenance. It is making the vision applicable to all departments and agencies that work within the rideaway. So we're not just talking about public works. We're talking about utilities, companies. We're talking about planning, documents like the Plan of Conservation Development, Conservation Commission, all of these different entities that play a role in how the use of rideaway and how land used adjacent to rideaway is put together. They all have a role to play here. Another reason for adopting a policy is to gradually create a complete network of streets that serve all users. So to be successful, a complete streets approach must incorporate into the standard operating procedure of all departments, as I just said, working within the municipal rideaways so that the small beneficial changes accrue over time. This approach saves money in the long run because it allows the, the, the full benefit of the roadway project, planning, maintenance to be done right the first time. It makes a lot of sense to apply a policy to an entire community because it ensures that these kinds of solutions that may occur in small discreet places over a continuum of time, they occur in all of the community. And that way they can address systematic inequalities. Intentional and comprehensive approach to transportation planning, a complete streets policy addresses systematic inequalities to ensure that neighborhoods across the socioeconomic spectrum have safe places for people to walk, ride bicycles, use transit, and drive automobiles. Adopting a complete streets policy demonstrates a community's intention to improve quality of life for all its citizens regardless of their neighborhood. And lastly, it allows candy to create fast, low-cost, and high-impact changes in the community. It makes fiscal sense. This approach helps every transportation project achieve more with less by providing multiple community benefits. Many of the ways to create more complete streets are low-cost, fast to implement, and high-impact. And for example, what you're looking at is what we refer to as a, a demonstration complete streets project. So in this case, there was most likely what starts out referred to as a pop-up project, where over a short period of time, what you see here was marked off with, it could have been cones and paint, and allowed to stay in place for a very short period of time in order for residents to test it out and for engineers to see how it works out on the roadway. If that's a success, the next step is often a, what's referred to as a temporary project. And that's what you're seeing here where the improvements are a little bit more permanent. They're still very low cost, but they're intended to be in place for perhaps a month or a summer. And this gives the community and the transportation engineers and the politicians and everyone in the community a chance to live with the project. Finally, if that is a success, you now have the data and the community support to move forward for a permanent project that would take this and formalize it into curving and landscaping and, and outdoor seating, et cetera. It also gives you an advantage when applying for grants if you can demonstrate that this has been tried and true in your community. So here we're going to wrap up the presentation. I'm going to explain to you that in the state of Connecticut, we have a complete streets law. My screen has gone black. Can you all still see it? There we go. Okay. And this was passed a few years ago. It applies to state roadways, state rideaways. It requires pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users to be routinely considered in the planning, design, and construction operation of all state roads. I will say, based on my experience on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, it's a challenge for the state to adhere to their own requirements. The Department of Transportation, as you probably know, is, is, is a collection of many different silos. They don't always talk to each other, but we're doing our best to bring these issues their, their attention routinely. Now, in the southeast region, Groton, of course, is part of the Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments. Last year, the COG commissioned and completed a regional bicycle and pedestrian plan. It overlays Groton, so there are routes identified in that plan through Groton. There's a proposal for the eastern shoreline path from the Rhode Island border to the Connecticut River Bridge and beyond. The state, the state board is currently working with the Jason COGS to, to work on designation of that route as a U.S. Bicycle Route 1A that would complement the East Coast Greenway that runs inland. That would create a corridor for ecotourism, bike travelers to come through the town of Groton along the coastline. It'd be a very important economic generator and could also focus energy and, we hope, investment in the roadways and trails that make up the route. Most of it is state roads, so we're talking about state investment for the eastern shoreline path. And here are some of the towns, some of the municipalities in the state that have, that have real complete street policies that are implemented across their departments and agencies. And you can see several along the coastline, Guilford, Madison, near us. I've written those for Portland and for Middletown. And I think it's something that deserves your serious consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions or be of service to you following the meeting. So thank you for your interest.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kent. That was, that was very good. And I'm very pleased that that was made available to all of us in our packets, so we could take a look at that. I think it's important that we have this this evening if we're going to be discussing roads a little bit later. And I would like to see if Council Baumgartner would be interested in asking any questions. And I know Council Hede was also interested, and I was very interested as well. And I see councillors of Harry's hand. So Council Baumgartner, will you lead off? If you have any questions for Mr. Kent or any comments you'd like to make, sir?
Well, definitely. And thank you, Mayor. Brian, thank you so much for your comprehensive presentation. As you know, we, over the last several months, we've had discussions about how we can better incorporate complete streets practices in our, in our local street grid. And I think this presentation, you know, has demonstrated the, the need and the urgency. And I think this presentation, you know, has demonstrated the, the need and the urgency to develop streets that are, do, do, prioritize pedestrians and cyclists. This past year, we had a pedestrian death in the city of Groton in front of an electric boat. And as, as Brian suggested, complete streets can go a long way of combating and preventing traffic fatalities and pedestrian fatalities. And it's something that I think is very serious. It's actually in Connecticut this year has seen a significant rise in pedestrian fatalities. Obviously, a lot more people are home and walking about and certainly taking advantage of curbside dining, which is, I think, a feature of complete streets. But nonetheless, anything we can do to, again, promote pedestrian and bicycle safety, I am absolutely in favor and in support of. My question for Mr. Kent, I, I have several, but I'll lead off with one and, and yield to the rest of the council, is what process would Groton have to go through to adopt a complete street strategy or a complete streets policy? And another follow-up question to that would be, what, in, what other agencies within the town would the town of Groton and the town council have to collaborate with or work with in order to codify those, those policies into our, whether it's our ordinances or, or, you know, just create a, a policy statement? And so hand it off to you, Brian.
Sure. So the, the template for a comprehensive complete street policy is no secret. You don't have to hire an expensive consultant to put it together. There are many great examples of complete street policies that have been adopted by towns that are similar in their size and in their composition to Groton. For example, the town of Madison, Connecticut adopted a complete street policy, I believe it was in 2018, and they were recently recognized for having one of the best complete street policies in the nation by the Complete Street Coalition, the umbrella group, National Group, that collects and disperses information on complete streets. So many people have been looking at complete street policy documents and have been tweaking them and refining them. But that is not all there is to it. What's really most important is that a community goes through the process of engaging the principal stakeholders that this will affect and that their buy-in and that their, their contributions are included in any kind of policy that results in. I'm talking about your Department of Public Works, who will be charged with the majority of, of implementation, with your, 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 your police department, your fire department, your other emergency services, your planning department, your planning commission. All of these entities should be invited to the table. It should be, it should be a, a, a roundtable type interaction. My recommendation would be that the town puts together a task force that then works its way through these steps and goes before each of these entities separately and then creates a draft, and then everybody comes together and, and, and provides their edits so that when it finally comes to town council, it has the, the backing of all the principal stakeholders. It should also include some public engagement. That can take many different forms. Obviously, we're in the age of virtual input here, so unless that changes, that's how I think it would be inducted. You can do online surveys. You can get, you know, the, the kind of, take the pulse of your community by, by inviting people to take online surveys that ask about their preferences for hiking and walking and, and, and those sorts of things that my presentation touched on. So it's not a one-size-fits-all. There are great templates out there, but it's the process that the town should go through to ensure that this is something that can be adopted and implemented. Some towns just have a resolution that says we would like to adopt complete streets, but those rarely are successful because they're, they're simply declarations of intent, but they're not standard operating procedures that, that dictate the way things should be done. So rather than go into the, the pieces of the policy, of a typical policy, I'll just leave it at that and invite you to sit down and go through this point by point in another setting.
Definitely. Thank you, Mr. Kent. Let's see, we've lost Mr. Bird. He probably has some computer issues, so he's not available for questions at this time. So we're going to go to Counselors of Perry next because he had his hand up. Counselors of Perry, do you have a question for Mr. Kent?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment. We have been, for the last three years since we came into being the council, we have been very concerned for developing Groton and for attracting new residents and new business. Currently, Groton is largely rural in the way its streets are organized. There are no sidewalks or very few sidewalks. There are a few bike trails. I think that this program would make Groton appear much inviting to both new residents and to new businesses. If we could develop our streets so that they do accommodate everybody, I, I think we would go a long way. And I think, I think expending funds and resources in this direction is probably preferable to some of the other ways that we could. I think this would benefit the complete streets program. Developing streets with sidewalks and curbs and bike paths and crosswalks and safety features would serve everybody in the town more than some of the other programs that we've had that serve a few. So I would be very much in favor of pursuing this along with planting sewers and municipal water throughout the town.
Thank you, Counselors of Perry. Counselor Heat?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. Kent for coming out and taking the time to provide us with this presentation. I appreciate it. This, this looks beautiful. It's exactly the direction I think we should go, goes without saying, but we still have to say it. And I would like to ask a question, two questions, actually. One for Mr. Kent, and that one is, like, what are the objections that, you know, you, you've said if you just make resolution, it doesn't work. But what are some of the objections that you come up with from, from other towns or people who don't want to? Does anybody actually want to go against a, a program like this?
Well, yes, is the short answer. And the, the reason is, it's multi, multifaceted. Sidewalks can be controversial. So the town of Groton prepared a bicycle, pedestrian, and trails master plan in 2005. In fact, my firm prepared it for the town. And we mapped where there are gaps in the sidewalk network at that time and where new sidewalks should be recommended. What tends to happen is, for sidewalks as an example, when the planning gets down to the engineering level and really into the weeds on what are the conditions on the, on the ground, you find things like trees and, and artifacts, old stone walls, et cetera, that would be impacted by a sidewalk. So it, it forces the community to weigh the cost and the benefit. You also have property owners who object to sidewalks because they may object to the idea of people walking across their property frontage. They become very conditioned and used to vehicles, but people walking would be a change. And change is hard. And also, in our communities in the Northeast, many towns have ordinances requiring property owners to maintain sidewalks in the wintertime to clear the snow. So I've seen objection to sidewalks for that reason. Sometimes there's objection to bike lanes because they sometimes have to, they sometimes displace on-street parking. And for a business that has on-street parking near their, near their, near their business, the idea of losing any parking at all is, is very controversial. And the study that I referenced earlier was welcome because it shows that in business districts, bike lanes actually increase the, the economic activity. However, every case might be different. Groton's not a larger community like that study looked at. So those are two of the, of the reasons. There are others. There are, you know, there are cost objections. Sometimes these projects can increase costs of a, of a project. They can shorten the length of a project because more of the funding is concentrated in a smaller area. And so, yes, but I will say it helps to have an overall plan of the community. Groton has one that shows where improvements, at least, you know, 20 or 15 years ago were recommended. It can be updated, and it will guide the town in making intelligent decisions about what streets deserve to be complete streets. As Counselors of Perry just mentioned, there are rural character, there are streets of rural character, and some should stay that way. Some just don't, aren't justified to have sidewalks and bike lanes and all these other things. It should remain the way they are, but there are areas where sidewalks are of critical importance, especially near our schools. And just, I'll, I'll close with one example. The new elementary school on Fishtown Road that's being built, Fishtown Road does not have sidewalks for its entire length. And hopefully, that's part of the overall plan. If not, it should be considered, and I'm quite certain that our plan 15 years ago recommended sidewalks on the southern part of Fishtown Road. So that's just one example of just a common sense way to make safety a priority and to improve walkability in a community.
Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Yeah, wow, thank you. A very thorough answer. I appreciate it. My second question would be to town staff, maybe Greg Hanover or John Reiner, to go from where we are right now to achieve this kind of a project. What things would we have to do town level?
So this is John Reiner, and I'm sure Greg can hop in, you know, from a policy perspective. I think, you know, Brian's recommendations were spot on with, we don't want to just pass a resolution. We probably want to look at identifying, you know, more of a complete streets plan. And, you know, passing that resolution of support is a good first step. But then we want to, you know, develop guidelines, you know, within our regulations, but also, you know, working with public works. And I, I think if it's something that the council's interested in, then we want to formulate a plan and, and, you know, not just come up with something, you know, off the cuff. Greg, I don't know if you want to add anymore, if Greg's even on the call.
Yeah, no, I'm here, John.
Oh, oh, thanks, Greg.
Yeah, it's Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. You know, personally, I, I support this type of a policy. I like to see people out biking and walking on our streets. But, you know, realizing that there's limited space right of way, there's competing interests. You've got, I think Brian said you got emergency responders. You know, they want wide roads and get their equipment down. There's, you know, this traffic, on-street parking, all these things come into play. So, but these are things that we try to look at as engineers to, you know, add bike paths, which we, you know, we, we've done, like on Crystal Lake Road, we just reconstructed that. So we now have a bike path all the way from the main gate, the subbase, up to the Sealy School property. And we'd like to continue that all the way to the Danger River Bridge at some point. So we, we do look at the master plans. We, we try to incorporate these things. We add these in our CIP. You know, you have to understand these things do cost money. And, but I think the bottom line is, you know, we, we do, Public Works, we are in, in favor of, of this type of policy, you know, as long as it doesn't require us to do these things. But it's, you know, it's kind of a recommendation that we incorporate, you know, try to incorporate these things and, you know, make everybody part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner and Mr. Hanover. We have a couple of counselors with hands up, and then I wish to speak as well. So Counselor Franco and then Parker.
Didn't the Parks and Rec, I believe it was Parks and Rec, or May, no, it was actually planning. Didn't they do a road study and had volunteers go out in the community and walk and describe if there was a crosswalk or if there was somewhere to, like a sidewalk and what was lacking or how they, you know, like, what was their, um, their own ideas when they were walking the streets and how they felt while they were walking the streets? Was, did that happen?
This is John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Yes, as part of our Sustainable Connecticut Initiative, we actually had to do some type of, like, a public outreach project. And one of those, we did do a walk audit of some areas in town. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember what the recommendations of that were. But, you know, again, it's something we can certainly look into.
I do recall some of the results of that, and there were, like, numerous crosswalks that were lacking in areas and some sidewalk issues. But my question is, and is it possible for, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what we're looking for here. If we're looking to fund a study of some sort of the whole town? And if that's the case, I'm just wondering, is there audits that we can do and ask for volunteers from? Because from what I understand, there, there were a lot of volunteers that showed up. And, because they had, they had actually talked to me about it. Because, as with the Beautification Committee, these are things that we have looked at and had presentations on. And when you have, there's special art as well, and there's ways to slow down traffic, and there's ways to make it more pedestrian friendly. And we've worked with Wendy Berry with that. And she has put these in presentations, and actually, we've given them to the town stakeholders, into the community. And so this is what I'm wondering, is like, does this have to be a study? Or is this something that we can do as a town ourself?
This is Brian Kent. I'd like to answer that to some extent. And I will, I'll say, yeah, there are bike and walk audit protocols, and that is most likely what John was referring to, and they are great. It's, it's, it's very helpful to get people who walk and bike in your community to, to put their, their impressions down on paper because it's very helpful. So, so that can be continued. You know, the state has had programs going for a number of years now. One is called Connect, Community Connectivity that included road safety audits. I'm not sure if, if Groton participated in that program, but it is, it's still funded at a lower level this year. And there is the, the Council of Governors Transportation Improvement Plan, which is open for public input now. And through the Lots of Program, there's funding for local communities to improve their local routes that meet certain criteria. And to be eligible, complete streets elements raise a community's eligibility. Following Portland, Connecticut's completion of this complete streets policy, it has been very successful, now it's been four years, in attracting grant money for projects related to the complete street program. So by virtue of having a policy and a more coordinated and comprehensive plan, you raise the eligibility of Groton to attract grant funding. And, and that in and of itself can be very important, especially if it helps to fund a signature project, like a new multi-use trail or something that has high visibility and high benefit, because those are the sorts of improvements that get the community excited and, and, and pushing for more. So it's the, it's the beginning of a process, and it doesn't require a great amount of expense. I think quite a bit of this could be done internally and with, with volunteer support.
Thank you. And, and actually, one of the questions I was going to ask you is, what are some actual places in our town that you would say, this is an area that you could envision something different or? Because sometimes I have a hard time envisioning that. And I'm, and when other people may be presented to me, I can say, oh, well, now I understand. And I'm, and when other people maybe present it to me, I can say, oh, well now I understand what you're saying.
Sure. Well, for example, if, if, um, I mentioned the, um, the Eastern Shoreline Path, uh, proposal. So that would be a bicycle route from Westerly through Stonington. We, we, we were, uh, looking at possibly running it through Barn Island. We've already had made contact with, um, with each division of, um, uh, wildlife on that. And it would come down, we want into downtown Mystic. Now downtown Mystic has no space for anything, um, besides what's there now. And one way to make the main street through downtown and water street safer for, for all users and bicyclists would be to simply put share roads on the road and a couple of signs that say bikes may use full lane. Now you've probably seen this in Westerly, the Rhode Island DOT has been doing this in other communities. And it lets everyone know that bicycles can be on the road with traffic and they're not squeezed up against the parked cars or they're not riding down the sidewalk. That's a very simple and inexpensive way to accommodate bicycles on urban streets. In fact, the city of New London has created a comprehensive bicycle network throughout the city with wayfinding signs and distance and time signs and, uh, information kiosks, um, within the past year. And it's been very successful without their having to invest in an expensive study or in expensive improvements on the ground. So just go over to New London and take a look and you'll see what I'm talking about. And that could occur in the downtown Mystic area. But we've also proposed that a road like Noank Road, which is a state recognized bike route should be modified wherever possible to allow a, a wider shoulder for bicycle use. And that could be narrowing the travel lane by a foot on each side to 10 feet. Now, ConDOT owns Noank Road, it owns Route 1. It actually owns many of the rideaways where we would be interested in seeing modifications and improvements. So part of this whole, uh, process involves interacting with DOT and, and demonstrating to them that we're serious, that the town of Groton is serious about implementing complete streets. The more DOT hears this, the more likely they are to pay attention and coordinate their activities. So as far as the local streets are concerned, we've identified in the, in the regional plan, a couple of, of streets that we've recommended could be bicycle boulevards. And what that means is it's a local street with, um, uh, neighborhood traffic principally, uh, that really can be, uh, designated as a, as a route for bicycles. So that there's, there's signage and that there are, there are ways that vehicles are discouraged from cutting through, through, um, landscape islands, et cetera, et cetera. And then lastly, I'll point out a road that everyone I think holds fondly in the town of Groton, which is River Road, north of, uh, downtown Mystic. And it has become particularly popular, um, in the past six months as people have been spending more time at home and spending more time getting out and walking and riding their bikes. And as you've probably heard, bike shops have sold out of bikes and the bike companies, can't obtain bicycle inventory fast enough because of the, of the great, uh, increase in use. And so if you've gone up on River Road on a weekend, you've, you've, you've seen this firsthand. And what the regional plan recommended for River Road was that it be considered as a, what's referred to as an advisory bike lane road where the, um, where there are actually bike walk lanes on each side that may be, uh, five feet wide and that there'd be a center lane down the center that the, the cars actually share. And it's, in that case would be really just wide enough for two cars to pass. But the point of it is it would be make it into a street more like Pearl Street in Mystic, where there are cars parked on both sides and it's very narrow. But instead of the cars on both sides, you'd have, you'd have the bike lanes. And it forces vehicles to, to yield to cyclists and pedestrians and slow down. And if you talk to anyone that lives on River Road, they will tell you their biggest concern is speeding and inattentive drivers. And so that's something that is, would be worth looking at. For a road like that.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. We have other councillors who wish to speak as well. And this evening was not to, um, to make any kind of decision on this, but just to plant the seed in your head and give you a chance to look over everything Mr. Kent provided. And then we will come back to this at another time for, um, decision about whether we want to pursue or not. But right now councillor Parker has a question or a comment.
Both. In looking at the plan, um, I'm trying to figure out how much is it going to cost the town? Even with low SIP grants and all that, we still charge tax upon that. And two, the report that you gave out about the obesity and a couple others are 10 years old. So do you have a more recent one? And does DOT, um, want to encourage us, but we got to make sure that we, when we do those roads, who's going to be doing those roads that, that are owned by DOT? Is it DOT or are we looking for the town of Groton to do it?
So to answer your first question briefly, uh, the, um, the study, um, by, I believe this is CDC, was based on the, the, the latest census, which is in 2010. So we could expect to have new data, um, coming in the next year or so. But I'd also like to, um, inform you that the newest member of the Bike Groton Board is Cindy Berry, who is, um, a staffer at Ledge Light Health District. And she will be our, uh, resource for health-related, um, information going forward. Secondly, DOT owns their right of way and DOT does what they want. However, they often, uh, collaborate with towns and towns sometimes spend their own funds to make improvements within the right of way. And I, I believe if anyone, if anyone here was, was, um, with the town government at this time, when the sidewalks were improved on Noank Road, I think it was maybe 1999 or 2000. I believe that was done by the town of Groton. So it is, there is precedent for towns to, um, to make improvements to, um, state roads. Other than that, we're, I think, I think one of the, one of the key principles here is that towns implement complete street improvements as they are able. And it doesn't represent a massive investment and increase in taxes in most cases. And it's you controlling the city when it comes to this sort of thing.
Okay. Cause my other concern is if we start doing that, it's still going to limit some of those ones who do not have cars or the bicycle routes. There's some, when you're saying complete street, you want more easier access to people to get to different places. And a lot of people use the bus route. So you start narrowing the roads down. That's a wide vehicle. So that has to be looked at, fire trucks have to be looked at. So when you start taking more of the road away, and I'm fearful of having people driving down the road and there's a bicyclist, which I have to move all the way over to make sure I don't hit the person in the other lane as well as the person riding the bicycle. So that's almost like, I'm going to stop the vehicle, but you can't stop your vehicle because you have a car behind you. So what is the rules for yielding? So I'm not trying to cross over into the double yellow lane because that's a ticket. And then you have a person that's riding.
Let me finish. Mr. Kent, could you let councillor Parker finish, please?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I, I get fearful of trying to have a whole lane. As it is, they're already in the single lane, white lane, and they're riding and some of them ride two or three in the road and they're not supposed to do that. I don't want to hit anyone. I'm too fearful and I have to slow down. But you have vehicles behind you. If you go lower than 25 miles, you're in trouble. You got people honking at you. I don't want to hit another car trying to avoid a bicyclist. And there's not, you're right, there is not a lot of sidewalks here. But I'm trying to figure out who is the access for? A lot of people probably don't even have bikes right now. If what you're saying is that they bought all the bikes out, a lot of people walk in their local neighborhood. There's not a lot of stores right near them. That's a bike, that's a transportation thing. So are we going to increase the bus routes? Do we need to talk to C to make sure that all the people have a way of getting to where they need to go? If we're doing complete streets, is that, and then taken away from a business? I understand having a bicycle go there, but people might not have a bicycle and they need to park. And especially if kids, people with families putting groceries in the car or anything like that. I, I just think we need to think more about what we're going to do, what the areas are. I need more information before I even say yes or no to it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Parker. And we're not necessarily looking for an answer tonight. We just needed the, we needed to hear the presentation and, uh, we need time to go back and think about all of this. But at this point, I want to take my turn and just thank Mr. Kent for coming out tonight and for presenting this information to us. Um, I, I support the concept of complete streets. I recognize the problems that councillor Parker has raised. I think it is something I would like for us to pursue as far as the suggestion for, um, creating maybe a task force and a round table and to, to think these things through a little bit further and, um, get a chance to have all these questions answered. We are coming up, our, our next item on the agenda tonight is about road maintenance and rehabilitation. So, um, my goal was just to have this in the back of your head as we're going to be making decisions about these other items. And if, just to get a consensus as to whether the council wishes to pursue this. So, so far I've seen councillor Baumgartner, Zepary, Heed and myself, um, wish to pursue it further. That's not necessarily saying adopting anything tonight, but, um, I think that people are interested in perhaps creating, um, further discussion on this item. So that's where we are. And I see councillor Bordelain has her hand up. And then, um, I think we're going to need to wrap up to move on to the other three items on our agenda. We have people that have been with us and waiting patiently. Councillor Bordelain.
Thank you. Are you saying we need to get to other items or do you want me to go?
No, please take your turn. And then we have, um, we have four, three other items this evening that we have to attend to. So thank you.
I just would like my full time to speak only because this is my first time speaking, so I just don't want to.
You councillor Bordelain, thank you.
I just, that comment before I spoke kind of made me feel as if, uh, I was like, well, this is my first comment. I'll make it quick. I just wanted to say thanks for the presentation. I, I think it's extremely helpful. And I think it's, uh, important to look at this. I know living where I currently live, looking at Rainville, I know it's a state road on the hill that runs down to, um, you know, down where the Sneakers Cafe is at the bottom of where Catherine Kolnowski is. And, um, it's right at the, you know, uh, the foot of that is EB Parking and, um, there's no defined sidewalk on that side of the road. And it would be nice to have, um, that accessibility, um, as you stated in your presentation, for people with disabilities or, um, just in general, to have a safe defined area to walk on that's not all rocky and, um, kind of a bit of a hazard. So I, I do know that it's a state road, but something simple there, looking at that, would really allow people from the apartment building to walk down and walk to, um, you know, CVS or any of the stores, Sneakers Cafe, or any of the things along that road or, um, up and down that whole area. So that's something just recently from the area that I moved in, noticing the concern. At the end of my road, there's no crosswalk. There is a button for, you know, uh, people on, that are walking to push, but no defined crosswalk to really encourage, you know, that type of, um, safe walking. Um, if you come out of, um, the area down here, down by Catherine Kolnowski, and you head towards Thomas Road, then the sidewalk just ends. You know, and these are roads that I've been discovering more and walking. And, you know, it would be nice because it's a, a great area to be able to walk. And it, it, um, and it could be walked if the accessibility was there. So, um, not sure where this will go, but I do appreciate the presentation and the effort that you did. And, uh, I see a lot of things in here, um, of concern and things that, um, I think would only enhance our town and encourage more tourism and, uh, movability for, um, people, um, that live and come to the town. So thank you for that.
Good councillor Oberay or Melendez wish to speak on the issue this evening? Councillor Oberay, you're muted.
I'll just say quickly, okay.
No, go ahead.
No, I'll just say quickly that I'll, uh, I'll support, uh, moving forward with, uh, with, uh, more ideas and, and, and information as well.
Councillor Oberay?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Kent. That was a nice presentation. There are a couple of words in there. Sometime I'll talk with you about changing. But, uh, overall it's, it's good. It's good to put the thoughts in our mind as we go forward. I had one question and maybe Mr. Reiner could answer this for me. But, um, back since, uh, Mr. Foot was town manager, there was always a provision that if you built something, you had to do a sidewalk in front of it, any kind of a, an improvement or whatever it might be. And I'm just wondering, does that pertain to schools? Because I thought it was good notice, he noticed that there's no sidewalks in front of the, some of the new schools. And I'm wondering, uh, I know that's not your project and I know that we had a committee that was working on it. But would that provision carry forward for the sidewalks in front of something the town's building?
I would actually defer to Greg Hanover, uh, on that issue. I don't know if, but he was here either when Mr. Foot was the manager. I do know a lot of new developments.
That was even before me.
I was here when Dick Foot was town manager, believe it or not. I was a young engineer then. But to answer your question, councillor Oberay, the Cutler, uh, Elementary School will have a sidewalk in front of the whole property frontage. That will be, I believe it's a concrete sidewalk, a whole length, along the length of it. You know, the planning commission doesn't treat the town any differently than it does, uh, other developers. They require all the public improvements that they require of developers of us. So they don't require it to be extended beyond the property line. So therefore it's just, you know, strictly in front of the school itself.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councillor Baumgartner, you can have the last brief words, sir.
Yes, emphasis on the brief. Um, I'd just like to align my remarks with, um, uh, mayor, you know, suggesting maybe we ought to potentially set up a task force to, um, you know, look at developing those policies in conjunction with town staff, which is obviously so critical, since they'll be, uh, taking the lead on this and really implementing a lot of these strategies in, in the long run, especially when they start re, uh, resurfacing roads and thinking about, um, uh, developing new, you know, um, Groton. Case in point, I know in our, what we call downtown Groton, um, our, uh, town staff has been hard at work developing, um, a TIF district. And ideally we'd like to see some infill development there with mixed use. So, uh, you have people that, you know, walk around to, you know, go to the coffee shops and live in apartments, uh, you know, above. And I, I think that's really, uh, what young people are looking for, empty nesters are, are looking for. And I think that's a direction Groton ought to, ought to, ought to go towards. And I love that idea about River Road as well. Uh, and I'll leave it at that. Thanks again, mayor.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Kent. And, um, I appreciate all the materials you've given us, food for thought. Thank you for your time tonight, sir.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night. All right, we are on to 2020 636. This is the road maintenance and rehabilitation item and it begins on page 30 in your packet. And this evening, um, we do not necessarily need to have a motion either. There was a motion that Mr. Hanover put together, but we do not need to move that. This is informational for us tonight. I don't think that we will be prepared to make any decisions tonight, but this is just to get the conversation started. And there were some very good questions that were, um, presented to the manager. And again, much information was provided to us in advance. So this gives us an opportunity to hear from, um, public works as well as finance and to get some questions answered. And then we can walk away and have some time to mull it over. And then we'll have to revisit this again too. I don't foresee us coming to a conclusion tonight because this is a pretty big issue. So, um, Mr. Burt, did you want Mr. Hanover to start? Or, um, did you want to begin?
Um, there you are. Yes, sorry about that. Um, maybe Greg start us off.
Maybe Greg start us off about, you know, bring everyone quickly up to speed again about the pavement index and. Just a brief how, you know, we've funded roads over the years and then Cindy can go in and we do have our financial advisor here. Um, to talk some specifics, um, but Greg, if you want to kick it off.
Very good, thank you.
Sure, thanks, John, um, and just to be clear, the the motion that's on the referral, I I did not put that on there, I I. Contended this to be for discussion, I'm not sure how that got on there, but anyway, um. Prior to two thousand and twelve, when we had the referendum uh, that passed for the eleven point two million dollars. Um, the town funded the city Grand Long Point. Uh, and ourselves, um, in the capital improvement program year to year. Um, only major, you know, road reconstruction was bonded such as um, South Pleasant Valley Road, Buddington Road, Marining Street, those type of things. You know, the referendum was uh, passed i- in November, as I said, two thousand and twelve for eleven point two million. That money has lasted us and we still have a little bit left because it was extended in two thousand and seventeen um, for almost ten years. Recently, and I'll just, you know, kind of uh, refresh everybody's memory from the uh, pavement. Update that I gave back in June, I believe it was. You know, we had our uh, pavement inspected uh, by a firm, you know, the town, city and Grand Long Point. Um, and each road is assigned a pavement condition index or PCI, which is a number. Uh, zero to, zero to one hundred, you know, with one hundred being the best. Um, the average PCIs for the town is seventy-one, the city is seventy-four and Groton Long Point is eighty. Um, and you may note that Groton Long Point went up quite a bit from what it was back in June and that's because. We repaved um, a few roads down there and since they only have about. Seven miles of road, you know, repaving that a mile or so is really impacts their overall average. So based on these PCIs, um, and you know, we tried the general practices to keep. A PCI of seventy or above, which is satisfactory. We ran through some, the the computer program on different maintenance. Types of things to do with it's crack sealing overlay, reclaiming the roads, which is grinding it up um, and repaving, which is what we're doing now in Mystic. Um, and again, this is just looking at the, you know, rehabilitating the pavement, this, these numbers don't look at. Uh, putting sidewalks or any of the other complete street uh, items that we're just discussing. To just to maintain the existing PCIs, the town, we're looking at one point two million dollars a year. The city's about four hundred and eighty thousand a year and Groton Long Point's fifty thousand a year. You know, those uh, numbers add up to one point six eight million. Again, these are just rehabilitation costs alone, these don't include any finance costs or interest if, you know, we go the bonding route. Um, as far as the schedule goes, um, as I said, the original referendum, eleven point two million dollar. The balance, we're good for next year. Um, if we go the CIP route, you know, I will be putting in for. Uh, the upcoming FYE twenty-two CIP uh, money for paving because, you know, we start in the spring and I need that money available to. To me, um, in the spring of twenty twenty-two. Um, is if we go to the, through the bond route, we would actually start the process in the spring of twenty twenty-one. For a November twenty twenty-one referendum and with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Cindy, um, and I know she has. Our uh. Uh, bond expert here, Bill Lindsay, so she can uh, discuss the bonding.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover, I just wanted to jump in, the the information that Mr. Hanover was just providing. Is all on page thirty and thirty-one in your packet if you needed to reference any of those numbers. Um, Director Landry, thank you for joining us.
Sure, hello, everybody. Um, I just had a couple of comments before, I do wanted to turn it over to Bill, um, so he can review um. The numbers that he has provided in your packet. But we are in year, we have three more year, we had a five-year plan for the school district, uh, for the school project. We had a five-year bonding is what was planned, we have bonded for two years, we have three years left to bond for the school. Which is about um, forty-four million dollars still to be bonded to complete all three schools. And so what we ask him to do is to take the proposed bonding that we know we have to issue for the schools and add. Um, two scenarios, eleven million, which is what the prior bond issue was, or an an increase to fifteen million. And add that to our debt service to get us, um, so that we could see. Both in um, dollars and an increase to the mill rate of what that would be, the, what the impact of those additional bondings would be. So he has provided two, um, one for eleven fifteen and one for fifteen million. I said eleven fifteen, pardon me, eleven million and fifteen million and then the impact to the um, mill rate for both of those. Um, so, um, I can turn it over to Bill to give you a little bit more explanation of his spreadsheets. Because there's a lot of information on there, there's a lot of numbers and then we'll just um, open to questions. Bill, does that work for you?
Oh, yeah, yes, it does.
Can I just, one more thing, um, the chart that Director Landry was mentioning is on page thirty-three for the first one and the other one. Is on page thirty-five, if you want to um, take a look at those while Mr. Lindsay is addressing, thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
Good evening, again, uh, this is Bill Lindsay from Hilltop Securities, I am the town's financial advisor for debt issuance. And as Cindy stated, you know, we were asked to put together both a. Debt impact and a mill rate impact uh, for two different scenarios, one being eleven million dollar um, you know, road, road bond and. And then a fifteen million dollar road bond, so um, the first, uh, the first set of numbers is the debt impact for the fifteen million dollar road bond. So what we have here is, um, it's it's broken down by fiscal year, um, and then. First three columns on the lefthand side of the chart are the town's existing general fund debt. And then as Cindy indicated, we're layering in the balance of the Groton twenty twenty school program, the prospective borrowing uh, for the town share of the project. Uh, on top of the existing debt and then finally adding in uh, the proposed road bond. So as he, as we move across to the, from the left to the right on the chart, you'll see what the the individual um, bond issues that would have. Be in April of twenty-one, April twenty-two and April twenty-three for the school program. And then the prospective uh, road bond would be in April of of uh, of twenty-two, so as as Greg indicated. You know, if if you elect to go the the borrowing uh, route. You know, you would have the beginning year of your approval process in the spring of twenty-one with a potential referendum. In November of twenty-one and then we would issue the bonds uh, the following spring, spring of twenty-two. And finally, when we get to the far right side of 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 that, that table, uh, you'll see what the uh, what the impact is to the. The general fund debt service, so roughly about eight million dollars, a little over eight million dollars of general fund debt service in the current year. Uh, it'll be increasing really for the next four years to a peak. In fiscal ending twenty twenty-four, where it would be just south of fourteen million, roughly thirteen point eight million. Um, based on uh, the prospective interest rates. And then we've given you here kind of a census to what that annual increase is on a year-over-year basis. If you turn to the next page, this is the mill rate impact for the fifteen million dollar uh, proposed road bond. Um, and again, this is what the mill rate increase would be specifically for um, for the borrowing for, to repay the, the debt for that fifteen million only. So it, this does not bring the schools in because that's already been obviously approved by the voters a couple of times. Um, and so here, we we've given you uh, what the estimated mill rate increase would be uh, over the the ten-year borrowing. Here, we we elected to be fairly conservative with respect to the mill rate and assumed no grand list growth over this time. Um, just again, to to isolate what the, what the, what the impact would be based on uh, current mill rate. And then at, in column F, we've broken down what that mill rate increase is in dollars. Per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, right, so that's assessed value, not market value. But it's a scalable number, so um, you know, as as you go up in um, up in assessed value, you just. For two hundred thousand dollar, a home that's assessed at two hundred thousand, you would multiply that first uh, that that first. Impact in twenty twenty-three by two and, and and accordingly as, as we increase in in increments of a hundred thousand. And then we took that same approach again with this, with a slightly smaller um, borrowing amount for eleven million. So again, it's by fiscal year and it factors in or or phases in the remaining borrowing for the school program. And then brings on uh, the road program, assuming uh, April of twenty-two borrowing. Um, again, the debt service is going to be increasing in large part through the school program. Um, it, the peak year remains the same in twenty twenty-four, although at a slightly lower level. Due to the smaller borrowing uh, at the eleven million dollar size, um, would increase to about thirteen point two million. And then declines uh, after twenty twenty-four. And then the final, the final table, um, this is again, the mill rate impact for the eleven million dollar. Proposed bond issue, just um, just the mill rate for that, that debt service and that debt service only.
Thank you, um, Mr. Burt, did any of your other staff or guests wish to speak at this point or can we open it up for questions?
I think we can open it up for questions.
Okay, very good, um, do any counselors have questions? And again, I'll preface this with saying, we're not necessarily looking for an answer tonight, this is just something we need to start considering. And um, you can see the timelines based on um, you know, whatever your preference is. We're gonna have to decide fairly soon, but not necessarily tonight, okay, so Counselors of Perry.
Got some good ones.
No, let it go. You can say them to me, don't say them to them.
Okay, you guys, um, someone's mic is on. Um, Counselor Zepary and then Counselor Baumgartner.
I'm concerned about borrowing money for a recurring annual expense. As we borrow money, we uh, we uh, incur a debt service. And uh, then the next year, we're gonna have to borrow money for the next million dollars. And the year after that, a mi- another borrow money for the next million dollars. And I know the bond issue comes out in a fifteen million dollar lump or an eleven million dollar lump. But still, when it gets all paid back, we wind up paying twenty-five percent more. In the principal, and that twenty-five percent more is an interest payment. Uh, I think that bonds are are great for an expense like building a school or something that's a one-time expense. It's overwhelming and you couldn't do it without the bond, but let's face it, as we pay off this bond. We are gonna have roads that need repaired again. And so we do another bond and we keep perpetuating this endless. Uh, term of uh, interest payments. I I I don't think this is a good idea. Uh, and that's all I'd like to say and when it comes up to be discussed, I'll probably say it again. Even though I advise many of our fellow counselors that they should speak their mind once and trust the rest of the council to hear them. Uh, but I I I really think bonding for an annual expense like road repair is a big time mistake. And it occurs additional expenses for our taxpayers that really don't get us any further down the road.
Thank you, Counselors of Perry, we have Counselors Baumgartner, Franco and Heed and Melendez.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to align my remarks with um, Counselors of Perry. Um, when you look at the um, the interest payments, the town would have to pay out over the lifetime of those bonds, it looks like for. Um, the eleven million dollar bond, it'd be about uh, two. Well, for the, I'm sorry, for the fifteen million dollar bond, uh, it looks like it would be an interest payment of about, a total interest payment of about three million. Eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred dollars and for the eleven year pain, it would be about two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, now, what's absent from this discussion is a, any recognition that at some point, Groton's gonna have to pay for some bridges too. Um, and what we have not had is a discussion on how we end up paying for those bridges, which will likely be a much higher price tag than a. Uh, a ten-year um, uh, roads bond, um, so I think uh, one thing I would like to. Um, also discuss in the future is how that decision will factor into our decision as to how we best move forward about. Uh, funding roads in in the near future, but again, those interest, one of those interest payments alone could uh, most certainly take care of. Uh, the North Stonington Bridge and and uh, make a pretty big dent in uh, reducing our costs for um. Um, to rebuild the Groton Long Point Bridge. Um, so again, like to just align my remarks with Counselors of Perry, but I err on the side of caution and supporting his plan, but I I really do would like to think. Um, um, this bird and and our finance team for for um, putting together this um, presentation.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner, we have Counselor Franco, Heed and Melendez so far.
Thank you, um, so let me correct you, I I think um, what Counselor Baumgartner was talking about is the, the, the interest payment. I believe is two point eight million on eleven million and it's three point eight million on the fifteen million. Not thousands, it's millions, um, which is the twenty, about twenty-five percent.
Did I say thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, I. I meant to say millions, I apologize, thank you for the.
I think we knew we'd chat. Um, so I had sent some questions over to um, the town manager and one of them was um, regarding the Groton Long Point Bridge. Which were were expecting between maybe six to eight million dollars, um. As an estimated cost to get that one repaired. I'm not really sure what else we may have in the future for bonding um, in the near future. And one of the questions I was asking about was the maximum debt service that we can have. And this is by the debt policy, which states ten percent cap, which as was notated on this um. Spreadsheet and everybody was kindly, kind enough to update it for me so I can actually see the percentage by year. And two thousand and fourteen, we're gonna peak and that's gonna put us, if we had our budget increased as two percent every year. Um, that would put us at peaking in twenty twenty-four at ten percent and that's only with. Um. This, um, the road project and doesn't take in consideration possibly the bridge. Um, and then I also worry, what if something else comes up? That we may have to bond and I, um, I'm not sure what. You know, if if there's any kind of emergencies or something major happened and, you know, we had to use our general fund or. I I'm not exactly sure how this works about, um. How we, how we bond and go to referendum, but um. If there was something major that had to be purchased or repaired or fixed, we would be maxed out and I'm. I'm personally not comfortable. With raising the debt, um, the debt limit past the ten percent and I know from what, um. The town manager said, there are nuances related to how that calculation is made and whether sewer is included in that. Or not, but if we've historically always kept sewer in there. I would think that we'd want to, um, but what worries me the most is that in twenty twenty-four, we're gonna max out. Basically around ten percent if we increase our budget by two percent annually. And if we don't, we're gonna probably max out sooner than that, um. So can I ask, um, what has historically been done by paying as we go and how does that work?
I I, of course, haven't been here when the roads were being done that way, but from what I've been told, they were an easy thing to cut. So had to be a real commitment from the RTM and the council to keep up with the roads and the CIPs. But uh, Cindy or Greg might be able to speak further on it.
Yeah, I could comment on that, John, um, I know you're absolutely right, back when um, Mark Gofring was the town manager, he just got. Frustrated that, you know, in the CIP, the, you know, we had the three entities and and they just kept slashing, particularly the town. Almost to zero a couple of years and he he just, you know, he pushed the the uh, council at the time into this. Bond uh, way of funding and, you know, they they bought into it and went along with it. But, you know, that that, that was the reason that was done in two thousand and twelve is just because that, as John said, the CIP just kept getting slashed.
I see, thank you, Cindy, do you have any background on this as well? Is Cindy still here?
Yes.
Oh, there she.
I thought I was unmuted, um, I I would agree with Greg that that is what happened is it it was an easy target and there had been years when. and there had been years when, uh, both Groton Long Point and the city put their paving into their highway budget. And so then it was moved to the CIP so that the three entities were voted on, separately or in, in the CIP and not as part of their budgets. And, and I think there were years where it was part of the entities, other entities' budgets, but the town roads were cut. Um, but it was, it was a constant battle of, um, you know, trying to get it through the CIP and it was the same or similar arguments every year. And it was, it was, um, an easy target. Um, so, and I agree with what John said. We would have to get, there would have to be, um, not really a policy statement, but the council and the, um, RTM would have to agree that we need to fund our roads on an annual basis and it can't be one of the first things that's cut when we come back with a CIP that's very large, which happens every year. It's always very large.
I see. And, and so with both of you mentioning this, would, which the first thing that comes to mind is, um, I guess sort of what the state did is like a lockbox. I mean, like, is there a way that the council maybe could make a policy that a certain amount with the, the RTM approving, I guess, this, that so much goes in per year and it's supposed to be used for, um, the roads and, um, maybe a percentage or of our budget? I mean, I, I'm just throwing something out there to see that maybe a different way of doing this and holding that, that this money can't be spent for anything other than roads. And it's, you know, like as our debt ceiling is basically ten percent of our budget, that maybe a certain percentage of our budget, budget goes into this account and it has to be used for town roads. I mean, this is just something I'm throwing out there. But it would have to be a policy and that would be, have to be something the council would be willing to move forward with, but I'm just throwing it out there. But Cindy, can you tell me, um, in general, historically, what would they want to put into, uh, um, into the roads per year? What were they asking for? They, was it like maybe a million a year? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of number.
Well, I'm thinking, if you look at the report for this year, I think, um, Greg, what is it, one point seven to, uh, one point two just for the town?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking back, um, I don't have it here with me back in two thousand and twelve, uh, when, when the first, um, referendum was agreed upon. But I, I'm thinking it was around a million dollars. I could go back and look at the prior budgets. But I think one of the things we have to consider about the CIP, we're talking about the roads now, but, um, we've gotten into this policy of only contributing to the CIP and the general, from the general fund budget for whatever the projects were, um, for that year. We've never tried to put any additional money in there. And years ago, um, I don't believe it was that way. The contribution to the CIP was not tied to the current project. So that would be a way, we kind of built up the fund balance in the CIP that way so that in the case of roads, we could dip into the fund balance a little bit if we didn't want to make the contribution all in that one year. But I could, if you like, go back and look at the other budgets to see what on average for prior to the bond issue, um, maybe what was the request and what was the final approved amount, if that would be helpful.
Okay, let me ask Mr. Hanover. Do you by any chance know on average what we would spend per year on paving or just the town?
Back prior to two thousand and twelve, um, it was probably like, I'm gonna say six to eight hundred thousand dollars, something like that.
Counselor Franco, I'm gonna just give a quick response. Um, think of the fleet fund. And, um, that was a fund that the town had set up for years and years to do just what you were saying, where you would put money aside and it would be untouched and it would be only used for that purpose of buying the vehicles. And that has just been cannibalized, um, and it's non-existent. And now we're back at pay-as-you-go. So just, just from experience, that is what has been traditionally happening. Not that it's not a great idea. That's, I wasn't, I wasn't laughing.
Find a way that maybe we can do it without bonding and be committed to it in, in a, in some kind of way. Um, because I also look at that twenty-five percent and I think, how much more could we do with that twenty-five percent instead of it going to interest? And, um, that's taxpayers' dollars. I mean, it's millions of dollars. I mean, that's not like thousands. It's millions. I mean, this is a huge amount of money and I'm just trying to find a better way. Um, so, and if anybody, the town manager, do you have any other options other than bonding?
Well, the policy can be easily overridden. I don't know about an ordinance option. I do prefer the CIP route, just in terms, I don't like to pay the money for interest either. Um, if it can be done, that is my preference. You know, the other thing is if we just, if we were interested in doing more, you know, complete streets type of things, there's no set percentage you can add on for that. Each project separate. So if you did it year by year, you could easily, more easily do the engineering and figure out what your options are. So it, it works out better that way too, rather than trying to do a lump sum upfront because you wouldn't have all the engineering done. But outside of an ordinance, I'm not sure what could bind the council to anything. I'd have to see if our attorneys have any ideas.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We have Counselors Heed and Melendez.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'm also hesitant to increase the, the, um, debt that the town takes on, especially after, you know, we've, we've, um, built the schools. But I, you know, at the same time, I also think, uh, the stability of knowing that you have projects coming down the road and that you're able to maintain infrastructure based on, um, you know, you, you pass a bond referendum, um, you know, assuming that the, the taxpayers vote for it, uh, that's not an entirely bad idea. It's how a lot of things are, are done in this country. You, you bond, uh, and then the projects are, they're in the, I don't know what you call it, but they're, they're like lined up, ready to go. But that being said, I would think now, if you're going to bond, now would be a better time because the interest rates are relatively low. But I'm, I'm looking at these numbers and thinking that this doesn't look like a deal. Um, you know, everyone's refinancing their houses, the housing, housing prices are going up. Everybody's buying even though nobody has jobs. Uh, so it seems to me that we should be able to get a better rate on our, on our bonds, if that makes sense.
Counselor Melendez.
Yes, I agree with much of what has been said. I would prefer to, uh, avoid bonding as much as possible. Um, I was thinking in terms of, I know we have an account, uh, for, I believe for the assessment, because, because we do assess, assessing our properties every five years and we sort of anticipate how much it's gonna cost and we put sort of one-fifth of that every year. I think that's what the mayor was referencing. Also, we do it with, or we try to do it with the fleet. Um, is it possible to make an account like that so we don't have to do it through CIP? Or, or is it, is it by rules we have to go through CIP?
Well, I don't think, it will be a CIP. It'll be a capital improvement project. It'll just be the source of funding. But my concern was that we have not had good discipline in adhering to fleet contributions is where, what I was saying earlier.
Okay, but, um, like, so, so, um, I guess what I'm saying is, uh, could roads sort of be an exception? I don't, I don't know what the rules are specifically, like, we no longer fund roads through CIP. We change the way we fund them and we make it into an account, sort of, is, is what I'm asking.
That's a direct landry question.
Because those get cut a lot less. And if it's, if it's sort of just like a discipline thing where people think year by year basis, so they cut them year by year, and then over the long term, we spend more, um, I think that would be a, a good strategy.
Hi, um, this is Cindy. Can I speak?
Yes, please do.
Um, I think what you're referring to is, is we would appropriate the funds on an annual basis, but you would not make it part of the CIP. You would just make it another fund for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Greg, do you remember the capital maintenance fund? Were you here for that?
Um, yeah, I, I vaguely remember it.
Yeah, um, I'd have to go back. That's a really long time ago. I'd have to go back and remember that. But we eventually just disbanded that or, um, we didn't, we just used the, um, capital reserve fund. But it would still be a matter of whether you put it in the CIP or you put it into a separate fund. It's still, um, you have to have the due diligence to do it, to appropriate the funds every year.
Yeah, I agree. I just think, um, like, like what has been stated, the CIPs, they end up being easier targets. I mean, I don't know if it, it's sort of just like from a, from a standpoint, a, a psychological standpoint of, uh, just, oh, we'll do it next year. Sort of people don't have that sort of thinking with the accounts. And I think that might be able to, uh, solve the problem a little bit. So if we could do that, I'd be in support of that. But if we couldn't, still, I think, um, we should try, uh, to avoid bonding as much as possible. Thank you.
Okay, we haven't heard from Counselor Bordelone, Aubrey or Parker. Do any of you wish to speak?
I think Counselor Aubrey's saying something.
Oh, she's muted. Counselor Aubrey, do you wish to speak? You're muted. Can, can you unmute, Mr. Burt?
All I can do is ask her to unmute. I can't actually unmute her.
Counselor Aubrey, can you unmute, please? I'm here.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we couldn't hear you before. Did you wish to speak on this issue?
Um, I, I think we're trying to, uh, grasp some numbers. We, we probably need to, um, this is very helpful, what we have in front of us. But you know, it's kind of hard sometimes to say, okay, we've got this and we've got this and we've got this and we've got this. Cindy has it all in her head. We don't. And, and I think we need to bring it all together. Maybe we need a work session where we look at what we have and what we're thinking about adding to it and, and seeing what the cost is. And we can make a better decision as to, um, you know, how we're gonna approach it. I think it's very important to keep our roads in good condition. Especially as a real estate agent, when people come into town, you don't want holes in the road. But, um, over and above that, it's much more important that we do, we do it. But we just can't, we, we just keep adding on to this bonding situation and it's just growing and growing and growing. And it, I have a little fear of it. So I think if we could have a work session where we kind of throw them all up on the wall and see where we are, then we can make a better decision. Does that sound too simple?
No, and we certainly can revisit this in more detail. As I said at this, at the outset, I didn't expect us to come to a consensus tonight.
No, no. And I think this conversation is excellent and, um, you know, Cindy and Greg are, are excellent to help us with it. But, uh, I think we all are carrying that same fear of just making it too big. And we do have the bridges to think about. We, we can't ignore them. So, um, we've gotta just put it all, take it out of the pot one at a time, put it up on the wall and add it up. It's my thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelone or Parker, did you wish to speak?
I'm in agreement about the bond issue. I don't know if we should bond anymore or I think we need to take a step back. I am in agreement with Counselor Aubrey about that and double checking everything because we don't want to put the burden on us anymore than we have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelone, you haven't spoken. Did you wish to speak on this issue?
I'm great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are going back to second time around and I'm trying to go in order. So we will have Baumgartner and then Franco.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, uh, like to echo much of what, um, Counselor Franco suggested. I know in, um, meetings past, she has brought up, uh, this issue, especially relating to the debt policy. And I think it's so important. Our council is cognizant of that and clearly, clearly we are. So, um, just, uh, I, I know in the past, uh, Mayor and I actually, uh, right after, um, was appointed to the council, uh, we had a discussion, um, about, um, this very issue. Um, and one of the ideas I, I put forward, um, that, you know, it, it just kind of the, you know, hoping to see if it sticks, um, you know, uh, Groton receives about, um, I know last year, we, according to information I received to, uh, from, um, Cindy this past summer, um, Groton received about five point one million dollars from the motor vehicle tax, uh, which represented about three point nine, uh, percent of the, uh, general fund budget. Uh, in a fiscal year twenty eighteen, uh, Groton received four point eight five million dollars in motor vehicle taxes, which represented three point eight two percent. And FY twenty seventeen, Groton received four point three seven, uh, million, which, uh, uh, which is, represents three point six two percent of total revenue, uh, for that fiscal year. So, um, you know, what, what was suggested tonight was that, um, you know, Groton is likely to spend, um, uh, upwards of one, between one point two and two million annually on, on, um, on roads resurfacing. And, you know, what I, I'd like to see if we were to go to the direction, go to, into a direction of utilizing a fund of sorts, that it is tied to a revenue source. So say X amount of revenues or a percentage of revenues, uh, can, um, are earmarked for that fund. That way we could avoid, um, appropriating, um, you know, or, you know, arbitrarily appropriating here every year. So just an idea, uh, as we're generating ideas of, you know, about how to fund in the future. But, um, I, I'd like to see that a revenue source directly associated with, um, with roads or is applied to it. Um, it just makes more sense to me, almost like a, a user fee of sorts. So again, just an idea. Um, you know, and, um, I'm sure we'll have many discussions and meetings to come about this, but, um, uh, nothing, nothing further, Madam. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Um, so just as I was sitting here and just milling about, um, my thoughts, uh, because people have raided, I guess, the money before or cut it or slashed it, is it possible, and I'm asking Mr. Burt, if maybe you could ask the attorneys, just if this is a possibility, because I'm not positive, if there was to, an ordinance possibly created that was maybe brought to referendum and the town voted on it? And, um, that it's like something that has to be done every year and that money has to go towards roads. And if it has to be increased or decreased, that account, like, it has to maybe go back and have the voters vote on it. So if somebody wants to slash it, they actually have to get the voters to approve it, maybe in a, like a question on the ballot.
I think that would be difficult though in the middle of the budget process. I mean, you'd have to, and my understanding is you really, I didn't, I think that'd be awfully difficult. Um, but I'll talk, I'm gonna, we'll talk among the staff and with the attorneys on any options out there on how to protect it.
Right. So if our, it's, so let's just say our, um, we have, you know, an election in November and they vote on it for the, the future, like for the next year, for when you're gonna just start your budget. And then you're like, just say, come to the council and say, you know what, we really need to increase it by this much. It goes on the ballot on November and then you sort of know for that when you're working on your budget following after November for the spring. It's just a, a thought process.
Yeah, it's hard to make a look at it.
This way, I'm trying to find ways that it just can't be cut.
Right.
And that it has to be a big process. And then if you want to increase, it's a process and the town can actually have a say in it as well. And if it wants to, you know, and a council in the future and, you know, anybody, it has to be a process and, and it's not easily achieved. It has to go through a, a good process. That's just on, just an idea. Thank you.
Counselor Heed.
Uh, yes, my question is for John Burt. Uh, John, um, obviously none of us are particularly interested in taking on bonding. Uh, but several of us have been around long enough that we know that, uh, things get cut. And, you know, as councils change, RTMs change, elected officials change, different priorities happen. So let me ask you a question as town manager. How would, and of course, I think in terms of, uh, how to run my household, not how to run a town. But you're in charge of, of running the town. So what would, I, I need to know, like, what would you feel most comfortable with?
Again, my preference would be to do it, you know, through the regular annual budget if we could figure out a way to make it fairly safe. I'd like some time to explore options out there and report back to the council. Um, because we need every dollar we can get and I hate to tie any of it up on interest. And, you know, the other thing is too, if we came up with something, we can try something else for a couple of years. And if it's failing, you can always go back to bonding. It's not like this. you can always go back to bonding. It's not like this is a forever decision.
Mr. Burr, could um, I was looking ahead at what we have coming up. Um, would a month be enough for you to get some answers to some of the issues that were raised here, and we could revisit this in October? Would that make it? I I think we'd be okay if we were going to put it in the budget, if you had an answer from us at the end of October, be beginning of November, um as far as preparing your budget for next year, correct?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. And does that then give you and your staff and the attorneys time to get the answers to our questions?
Yeah, that should be plenty.
Okay, so if that's acceptable to the council, we'll plan on putting this um back at on Cal um at the end of October? Is there any objection to putting this back on the cow at the end of October? Okay, I see no objection. So we'll plan on that then, Mr. Burr. Does that sound fine?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, great. All right, let me make a note of that. Okay, wonderful. Very good. So um I'm not sure if Mr. Hanover and Director Landry are staying around for the next item. If you're not, thank you very much. Um, and we are on to twenty twenty one twenty seven Sealy School Property Concept Plan Review, and this is on page thirty six. And um, let's see, where did we leave off? We actually have a motion on this one. And I think we are on Counselor Parker, please.
Make a motion, yes, make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the Donmar Residential LLC conceptual design plan in the former William Sealy School property I so moved.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Heed. Thank you. And we have Mr. DeJoy with us this evening. Thank you, sir, for being here with us, and thank you for waiting patiently. And I'm not sure who is going to start the discussion this evening. Mr. Burr, will it be Mr. Reiner or um Mr. DeJoy is starting us off?
Uh, this is John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. I will quickly start things off.
Thank you.
Yeah, so uh first of all, good evening. Thank you, everyone, uh for your time tonight. So I just want to give a a brief kind of where we are and where we're going. So we've been working with Donmar for some time now. They have been selected as the preferred developer for the Sealy property site. And one of the items that the council had asked for uh through that process was that we actually bring the uh concept design to the council for the council to weigh in and give kind of a a final approval on that particular property. So what we have before you tonight is the plan. So back in November, Donmar had presented some uh initial concept plans for the last number of months. They've been refining those plans. And we have those before us tonight with a more accurate layout, unit count, uh as well as, you know, access on and off the site, uh both driving, pedestrian. And, you know, the purpose of the council's review tonight is to look at this, not from a regulatory standpoint. This is, you know, not the formal planning and zoning inland wetlands approval, but more looking at the concept design and, you know, seeing if you agree with, you know, how it's laid out, consistent with what was put before you before. Uh, through the planning and zoning process, Donmar, as the applicant, will work with the Planning and Zoning Commission on traffic and roadway access, traffic studies and things along those lines, because I know that's something that's come up a number of times, uh as well as, you know, the regulatory process through the Inland Wetlands Commission. So um after the council reviews this uh concept plan, and if the council approves it, the next steps for Donmar will be to go to make application for the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as inland wetlands. They also are gonna uh have to follow a couple of their additional steps, uh getting us a demolition plan for the property, as well as we have to work with them uh on a short term tax agreement that was laid out. Uh, the details of that were laid out in the option agreement, dealing with uh some tax abatement just during the construction time of the buildings, not of them paying property taxes on the land itself, once they own the property. So that that's kind of the overview I wanted to give. Um Anthony and his representatives are on the line also. And I know he wanted to give uh kind of an overview of the the plans, and I want to hand it over to Anthony.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, gentlemen.
Thank you for having me. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
So good evening, everybody. It's nice to hear the familiar voices. I hope everybody's happy and healthy. Um, maybe I'm getting a little out of myself, but hopefully we get to see each other face to face for a groundbreaking ceremony. Um, like John had said, I'm coming before the council this evening to inform you that Donmar has concluded our due diligence, and we're nearing a finalized site plan. Um, so with that said, I'd like to let the council know that we do intend to execute this option to purchase the former William Sealy School. And like John had mentioned before, the last time I came before you guys, um to have that option approved, you had requested that we come back before the council when we get closer to a finalized site plan to make sure that the plans are actually aligned with our previous submission. And um I'm here, I'm confident that the materials that I submitted for this evening um do demonstrate this consistency, um and that the project's going to exceed the town's development objectives for the parcel. At this point right now, we're a very short sprint away from finalizing those site plans, and our goal is to appear before inland wetlands at the October twenty eighth meeting. And again, with that said, um I'm here to give you a brief overview of these plans and answer any questions that you guys may have. So I'm going to um share my screen here if I can figure it out.
Great, thank you.
Can everybody see that?
Um, yes, very good. Thank you.
Um, so this is um, this is in your packet. I believe it starts on, I think, I want to say page thirty six. Um, this right here is the as-built for what the William Sealy School is right now. Um, and before I go on to the layout that we're kind of are going with, um I just wanted to point out, if you notice, the William Sealy School has two wings, and they're kind of askew to each other. And we tried to mimic that with our new layout. If you had looked at the other ones, they were more parallel, uh more block-like. So when we were kind of transitioning into what the final plan was going to be, we tried to mimic that Sealy School a little bit. And it gives a little bit of um a perspective from when you're inside the courtyard. So I think that the architect for the William Sealy School had kind of the same idea as us, and we kind of tried to mimic that a little bit. Let me go to the next page here. So this is actually a little bit updated from the plans that were submitted in the packet. I just got this back from the engineer this morning. And the only difference is is that the courtyard that we had a landscape architect um design is reflected in this. So the only changes with this site plan are the actual courtyard. Um, so again, I'm going to go back to how the buildings are skewed. Um, so when you're walking in from the back of the building, and what that does is the two buildings kind of tilting in towards each other give you the perspective that it's further away than it actually is. Um, and that kind of makes the courtyard entrance from the backside look a little bit more grand. It makes it look larger. I'm not saying that it isn't large, it's over an acre. Um, but it's kind of that perspective. And the most famous example of that in classical architecture is probably Saint Peter Square. Um, if you see it, they're kind of askew, and that's all for perspective. And going back, looking from the other side, um the perspective is a little bit reversed. It makes it feel a little bit smaller, but what that does do is that lets in more light, and it makes it a more open and inviting environment. Um, I think the most jarring thing that you'll notice from this layout is we reconfigured the parking lot. Um, some of your concerns with the parking lot were the amount of asphalt and the amount of area that that takes up. Although we can't really shrink the parking lot down too much, we can't lose too many spaces, because we actually, we have to have the spots for people to park. Um, we did kind of round everything, and what that does is that helps to eliminate some of the corners, um some of the larger right turns that you would have to take. So it kind of helps to shrink up the parking area a little bit. Um, right now, we have three hundred and fifty eight parking spots. And I'm not sure if you guys can see my mouse on here. But this parking lot in the rear, which consists of thirty seven parking spots, when we take that through planning and zoning, we intend to leave that as deferred parking. Um, we don't want to spite ourselves and not have enough parking, so we are going to leave that off. It's not going to be initially parked, uh paved. But what's going to happen is if we determine that the parking lots are too full, and it's too difficult for people to park, we are going to go ahead and and pave that parking lot. But again, we want to shrink up the amount of asphalt that's there. That was one of the requests that a lot of people had asked for. And um I think that we really delivered with this parking lot layout. Um, the second thing that I want to point out is the public access aspect. You guys had asked, because a lot of the residents were concerned that they were losing public space. If you look in the rear of that deferred parking area, we do have the dog park and the place, we have a second playground area located outside of the courtyard, which will be gated off. Our our intention is to make parking spaces in the rear open to the public, make the park and the dog park as well open to the public. So when we were, when we were getting some feedback on the original layout, one of the other things was um walkability. This site is not a very walkable um site, but what we tried to do is we tried to make it, once you're inside the site, whether you park in the front or pack park in the back, that the exterior of the building is open, inviting, and there's a lot of um walkways. Want to quickly pull up a different plan here that kind of illustrates that a little bit better um for the public aspect, uh the public access aspect. Can you see the colorized plan now? Let me switch that.
No, it's still the same slide or the same screen, rather.
There.
There you go. Yes, thank you.
So the other area that's going to be open to the public is just outside of the courtyard. Um, it's not going to be gated until you get up the steps. So we kind of wanted to make a bench area, a sitting area um as well for the public. So we really do intend to make this open to everybody um as much as as possible, without neglecting the residents that live there. Um, but that that public access aspect is there, as you guys had asked for previously. Back to.
Thank you so much. We we appreciate the sensitivity to the request. Thank you.
I'm gonna go back to the um actual site plan. Uh, one of the other um items that was actually spelled out in the option agreement was to um take out as little trees as possible. Um, again, if you guys go back to your packet, you'll notice that this area for the retention pond was carved out further. Um, and that makes it easier for us to do site work. Uh, but one of the things that you guys wanted to do was retain as many trees on the site as possible. So we kind of tightened up this this bulk in this top area to uh kind of keep as many trees as possible on the site. You know. Back down to try to uh zoom in for this area. As we started to um explore the zoning regulations a little bit, unfortunately, we had to um cut out the parking garages. And I know that that was intended to shield the residents on Sen Cow Avenue a little bit. So what we did is when we were playing with the grades on this site, we kind of picked up that area a little bit to shield those those houses from from lights, traffic, noise. Um, so if you look on the lower area here, there's a retaining wall that goes from about seven and a half feet tall down to um about two feet before it dies into the grade. That was as as high as we can make it within zoning regulations and as high as we could pick up the site in that area. And then tearing back, um probably about another six to seven feet, there's another two foot wall, and we're going to heavily plant that in that area to kind of give them a little bit of light and noise shielding. The other things that we're exploring right now are different types of parking lot lights that don't have as big of a spread. They're tilted out away from the houses so that we can really kind of cut down the light and cut down the impact to those those neighboring residents. I think one of the last things that everybody stressed that was pretty important to us was the future access to the abutting property. Um, so again, when we were playing with those grades and everything, we picked up that corner there to eliminate, there's a retaining wall running here to kind of diet short of of where her property's connection would be. So that connection is still feasible. It's still located in our plans, and it's something that we still intend to explore in the future. Going to share the next screen. So the other item that's included in your packets tonight was our design progress for the buildings. This design is not going to progress much further before we go to planning and zoning. Um, this is very typical of what takes place for this kind of a process. The actual building plans aren't drawn till much later, when we actually have an approved site plan, because a lot goes into these plans. Um, these plans are going to take us about a hundred and twenty eight to get structural, mechanical, plumbing, and all all that in there. But these layouts that you see for these buildings are reflective of what it's going to be. The unit types are not laid laid in concrete yet. Um, they're kind of modularly designed so that we can pull things out and and swap them around. Uh, but what you do see for this layout and the typical amounts of units per floor plan um are what's going to be reflected in the future, future project. Going to um go down to the elevations now. The elevations are still consistent with the concepts that we we gave you previously. It's our intention to use um fibrous cement paneling, um stone accent, and um horizontal siding, whether it's fibrous cement or vinyl, we have not decided yet. Um, our goal with this is to kind of give you a little bit of a modern looking building, but at the same time, keep it um a little more traditional, so that doesn't stick out like a sore thumb um in a residential neighborhood. We don't want a big concrete behemoth um in everybody's backyard. Think that the last thing that I'm going to um pull up is the amenity layouts. Um, this is our clubhouse floor. It's very similar to what um we showed you guys before. Um, it did grow a little bit. This particular building um grew, I think, about twelve feet on each side. Um, and we made up for that in shrinking the um building on the western side of the um of the property. So this this clubhouse floor is now uh fourteen thousand square feet, and that's reflective of the entire building's footprint. So that building in total is about fifty six thousand eight hundred and forty square feet. The largest of the buildings has a thirty six thousand square foot foot uh footprint, and that building in total is a hundred and sixty three thousand square feet. Um, and the building in the middle is about twenty seven thousand square foot footprint, and that's reflective of about a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet. The total footprint of these buildings where we are right now is about eighty thousand square feet, which is um very much consistent with the previous concept. Um, our actual square footage of the buildings did grow, uh but that was all um done subgrade. So if you look at the packet, and I'll pull the thing up so that you can see what I'm talking about. This area right here is what what grew. So we actually have a larger um walkout area at this point. So we are at three hundred and four units, where we were previously at two hundred and eighty. I like to stress that the three hundred and four units is allowable by the zoning regulations there. Um, the footprint of the buildings did not significantly grow, um although the the square footage of the buildings did grow, and most of that is made up subgrade. Um, I think that I've pretty much covered everything that I kind of wanted to share with you guys. Um, if you guys have any questions, I'm I'm willing to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. DeJoy. Um, councilors, do you have any questions? Okay, give me one second, please, because the screen, um I don't have my normal view, so let me just go through and get everybody's names down before I start recognizing councilors, please. I'll make sure I get everybody in the first time through. Okay, so we have um Councilors Franco, Heed, and Bum. Okay, so we have um Counselors Franco Heed and Bum Gardner.
Thank you. Um, so you've moved up to three and four units and from the diagrams that I have seen here are, are they mostly all one bedroom? Is um, do you have any of that figured out?
Yes, um, in, in my, can everybody hear me? Am I muted? Okay, so yeah, so we had a market study commissioned and they kind of directed us towards the optimal um unit mix. I did not break it down by building. I broke it down by floor um because all those three buildings, we kind of consider one building because they are interconnected. So right now my unit mix is 61% one bedrooms. Um, that was indicated that that would be the optimal mix for the market in Groton. Um, I have 14% studios and 25% two bedrooms. And again, should, should market data change over the coming months before I actually break ground? These units are easily swappable because they're, they fit into a certain footprint, so with minimal change. But right now I'm at, at 14 on the studios, 61 on the one bedrooms and 25% on the two bedrooms. And um in total, so I'll have 77 two bedrooms, 184 one bedrooms and 33 studios.
Thanks. And I saw that the um the old main entrance to the school is now going to be 20 feet wide and it is going to be a gated emergency access because that was something that um the neighborhood was very concerned about. And, and you've put in um the pro, you know, you're, you're taking consideration of the neighbors and putting in um privacy and trying to minimize noise and light. So um, one of the last questions is the main entrance that you're going to have. Um, do you have that in a diagram and can we, can we see that?
Sure. I don't have a um, an expanded view, but what I can do is I can share um, share that and kind of try to um zoom in on the latest, the latest area. Um, so we're about um, we're about 50 feet uphill from the intersection at North Hill. Um, now are you asking from a privacy standpoint from 91 Walker Hill Road? Are you asking from a um, a safety standpoint?
No, so I'm just looking for Sealy School Drive. That's been basically.
Sealy School Drive is right here. Um, Sealy School Drive will remain its width that it is now. Um, and it will die down to a 20-foot um access to the property. That's um, that's something that's done for life safety. It will have um what's called, actually I think Rotten uses a different brand, but the typical brand is a Knox lock. And what that Knox lock is, is that's a, a special type of a padlock that um police officers and firefighters and other emergency responders will carry a key for. Um, so should there be an accident or something catastrophic that happens in the main entrance? Fire trucks, ambulances and police officers have an alternative, alternative way to get into the property.
And so the main entrance, um, has anything changed with that since you've last come to us?
Um, so I, all we've done at this point is we've kind of figured out the grades and how it's going to be. Um, I, last time I was out there and my engineer has not been out there to resurvey, I noticed that the, I don't know if it's the town or the city was doing some work with some retaining walls. Um, along Walker Hill Road in front of the water tanks. So that's something that my engineers back out there to explore to actually figure out exactly the heights and the um, and the grades that are going to be on that entrance. Um, but nothing substantial has changed from, from the last concept aside from, um, we've, we've slid it over as, as far as possible in the easement that we have. And um, it's looking like there's going to be some sort of a retaining wall on the left side coming in. And again, that will help to, to shield the property owner at 91 Walker Hill Road.
And have you, you've worked with them, the neighbors? Have you talked to them and worked with them at all?
I have been in contact with the um property owner at 91 Walker Hill Road's um attorney. And basically we left off the conversation that um, that would make every effort to, to, to give him his privacy. We offered to purchase the property. Um, we, we made him a more than fair offer, um which he declined. And at, at this point, all we can do is, is drive an engineered solution and a solution from a landscape architecture standpoint to give him as much privacy as possible on that, on that entryway.
All right. Thank you very much.
Counselor Heed and then Bum Gardner.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Anthony DeJoy for coming back out and talking to us. I appreciate it. Good job with all of the, the uh, the graphs that are not graphs, but the details that you've passed along to us. I appreciate that. I did have a question about uh the um, I'm not sure which page it is, but like it looks like south of the building, there are some drawings around what might be water containment or uh something like that. Could you talk a little bit about, about that?
Um, sure. So it's um Connecticut State Regulation that all the um stormwater that's captured on site has to be retained and let go at a controlled pace. So what happens is, is you're going to have the, the gutters that are collecting the, the water that's on the roof and you're going to have the storm drains that are collecting the water from the parking lot um are going to drain into basically a retention pond. That's either going to um dissipate the water at a controlled rate or in the event of a hundred year storm or a storm that occurs every hundred years, it's going to have an overflow where it will allow water to go out as to not breach the uh, the embankments of that uh, of that retention pond. It's something that's very typical and it's something that you will see in every, every new development. Um, what I will say is that previously the school that was there was, was built, I think, I believe in the 50s, um maybe a little bit later, but when that school was built, there was no such regulation. So what's happening right now is that the water that's collected in the parking lot and on the roof there is kind of just, it's just washing down the hill um in an uncontrolled um manner. So rather than having water running off the site in all different sides, it's going to be captured and it's going to be held on site.
All right, um, thank you. Uh, one other thing, uh, not to throw salt in the wounds, but have you had a chance to speak to our neighboring, uh, our, our friendly neighbor up there?
Uh, I have not. Um, to be quite honest, honest, we've been extremely focused on, on getting this project up and running. It's a, it's a little bit more difficult with everything that's going on because we can't have face-to-face meetings with our engineers and architects. So our primary objective is to get um Triton Square um off the ground um and bring that from, from paper to plywood. And um, that's just not a distraction that we were uh willing to engage in at this, at this time. But again, like I had mentioned previously, we did make provisions to make that site accessible.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much. Looking forward to, to breaking grounds.
Thank you. Me too.
Counselor Bum Gardner.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first and foremost, just um like to thank um uh the DeJoy's for joining us tonight. Uh, I know it's uh very difficult to, to be always having these meetings uh electronically. I know we, we'd all much prefer to do these in person, but um, so thank you for bearing with us. Um, nonetheless, um, you know, I, um, when we, the council had first considered um moving forward with the um concept, uh, with the development agreement. Um, you know, I'd shared many of my concerns just about um some of the neighbors' concerns as well as um some environmental concerns. I, I know that DeJoy has made a, you know, a good faith effort to address those, especially early on in their, um, early on, early on in their presentation, um earlier on in their um solicitation of, of the town, which, you know, I appreciate. Um, but nonetheless, uh, what we see in the second round, the second plan is a uh further reduction in tree canopy uh than was, than had um, you know, than uh compared to what we initially expected with the first plan. So uh my question to um Mr. DeJoy is what um percentage of uh tree canopy is reduced um from not just the current footprint, but also uh what had been previously proposed? And um, uh, second part of that question is how, how does the, how do you plan on compensating for the loss of uh tree canopy? Uh, what it, on what is currently a town-owned property?
Um, so from the previous concept that I submitted to you um, to this concept, there's, there's not much more tree canopy. The only tree canopy that's additional um is located where the pond is, which we kept as tight as possible. And that's something that we cannot avoid. Um, and the other, the other spot that we kind of had to push a little bit further out was where we had the dog, the dog park and the playscape to um kind of give you that public access. Um, let me go back to my other page here on the screen share. Um, I think that the landscaping plan that we're going for, I, I know that smaller um or medium shade trees are not really a um substitute for larger, more established trees. But we did retain a landscape architect um to kind of plant as many trees as possible and plant as many shrubs, flowers, um, and, and other plants to uh kind of compensate for, for the tree canopy reduction. Unfortunately, um, there's, there's no way to shrink the trees that we're cutting down. It's, it's not as drastic as it probably looks from the overhead view. If you look at what's currently there, there's um large fields um behind the, the water tanks and there's um a large area in the back of Sealy School, which, which is actually a drive under garage area that is paved. So the amount of trees that we're cutting is not excessive and we did make every effort to keep that at a minimum and we are making every effort to plant as much as possible in replacement for that.
Uh, th- thank you for that, but my, my um, I guess my follow-up, follow-up question would be, um, you have now 358 parking spots, which is about 10 less than what would be required from planning and zoning. Again, that is the maximum, not the minimum. Uh, selfishly, you know, I, I come from point of view, parking, minimum parking requirements are foolish, especially when, you know, uh towns should be making efforts to make their communities more walkable. And then, you know, we talked a lot about that tonight. But um, my question is with that retention pond, uh, that, whatever, if you decide to build that in the, uh, build the excess parking lot in the future, that absolutely will further impact um your uh stormwater runoff. So h- how is it that you can um build the retention pond with, without having to um factor in the potential of building that, those additional parking spots? Um, if, if that makes sense.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll go back to this uh, to this plan again. Um, so when we draw this retention pond and we make those stormwater calculations, you can actually see that the infrastructure is in place for that area. Um, that's why it's deferred parking. So I'm going to go into planning and zoning. Um, with that parking on the site plan, the runoff that's, that would be on that parking lot will be accounted for in the stormwater calculations. Um, we are just going to choose not to pave it initially to kind of try and shave down the amount of asphalt that's on there. Uh, but again, I go back to, there are 304 apartments there. Um, we do want everybody to have a parking space and we don't want the residents that live there to come home from work at the end of the day and have to spend 15, 20 minutes driving around the parking lot to look for a parking space. Um, so the only way that I can feel comfortable in reducing those, the amount of parking spaces is to shave off that rear lot and, and leave those as 37 deferred parking spots. So that number of 358 spots includes the 37 deferred. But when I initially go to build out the site, I'm not going to build or pave those rear 37s. I'm going to put in the infrastructure for them, but I'm going to leave it at grass.
Well, I, I, and um, and current, what you say is grass is concurrently trees, correct?
Um, I'm not sure if it, if, if that, that area is trees. Uh, but regardless, for me to access the area in the back to build that stormwater pond and to bring the infrastructure into the back, um, if there are trees there and I'm not 100% sure, um, they will need to come out regardless.
Well, I, I appreciate your, your, uh, your answers and again, your commitment to, you know, um, you know, doing, doing the right thing. Obviously, you know, you have your, your interests as a developer, which you are, I, I certainly respect. Um, but uh, just separately, I, I also have concerns, um continued concerns about traffic in that area. Um, as, as Counselor Obray suggested, right now there's a significant backup uh at all times of the day because of the uh now the Chipotle as well as um uh Jersey Mike's next door. Across the street, you have the um, the uh, the pack store that was um, you know, partially supported by Groton taxpayers, um, you know, um supporting their, their infrastructure. And what we have not seen at all, whether it's at the state level or at the local level, uh, is anything uh that has been done to um uh support or enhance pedestrian and bicycle safety in that area. It is absolutely an accident waiting to happen. Now having at least 304 motor vehicles or up and down or a max of 358 vehicles going in and out of now uh Walker Road is a huge concern of mine, considering that there are some streets that do not have sidewalks. So again, Mr. DeJoy, that's not something you can necessarily directly impact. Um, that's something the town uh would need to um, uh, would need to address head on. Uh, so I, I, I address, I say that to, to fellow counselors and our town staff that there, we also do our due diligence to um really fully understand the impact that this uh development will have on the surrounding neighborhood, considering that development has um really skyrocketed in that area in a way that in my eye isn't um uh very pedestrian uh uh safety. So uh, but that puts pedestrian safety first. So um, I, with that, I will yield the floor. And again, thank you, Mr. DeJoy, for answering those questions.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hand, so I will chime in at this point and um just say, I'll echo the sentiment. Thank you for being with us again tonight and um wading through our other business that we had to tend to this evening. Um, again, I do appreciate the fact that you have been sensitive um to our requests as far as leaving some area for the public and um implementing the playscape. We appreciate that and that's important for that area of town that we have those um green spaces available for the neighbors up there. So thank you for doing that. And um, I think it is important to restate what you mentioned about the um stormwater runoff and how currently there is no control for it. And with this plan, um, you're being directed to create this retention pond. So this is something that will help the environment in that regard to keep all the um stuff from the parking lot um from running out into, you know, the natural area and it'll be retained there and hopefully filtered out appropriately using plants and um other natural materials. So uh while I too lament the loss of um additional trees, I see the, the balance, the trade-off that we are getting with control of the stormwater runoff and um green space for the neighborhood. So thank you for that. Counselor Bordelone.
Counselor Bordelone? Sorry about that. Just a second. I'm using a different computer tonight. Uh, my other one was failing, so I apologize for the delay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to say thank you um for the presentation. It seems um, I mean, it's, it's a tough, I mean, I hear the cries of the people from the, the neighborhood where the uh concerns of the traffic and as it was already stated, the recent concerns of the traffic in that area have escalated. So um, you know, there's some concerns um as, as we want change and growth, there's some things that come with that. And uh, you know, as the building stands as it is now, it's not being used. Um, but its old use did not um have that amount of an impact of, of traffic on a standing day and into the evening since it was a school, so the, would die down. Um, one of the things that is very interesting as, and is very rewarding and helpful is having those runoff retention areas um, which do uh pose as a, as a benefit to the environment. Some areas, not just necessarily. Some areas, not just necessarily in this town, but as a whole, they've kind of done them and they kind of didn't do much with the landscape around them. And I'm not saying that that's your plan, but I was, I was wondering, would there be any thought artistically to summon some different towns and around different areas? I've seen you just kind of, you're walking along and you stumble upon this like kind of this ditch, you know? Will there be some type of tree structures or bushes? Or I don't know, something to kind of blend it so it's not as much of an eyesore as it is a, the functionality of it that helps with the runoff? So that's my first question. I don't know if you want to address that first?
Sure. So what you tend to see with retention ponds of that size is that, and actually this happens fairly quickly, is that they begin to fill in with, with cattails, other, other plants and stuff that, that kind of mimic what is in the wetlands. I can, I can provide you guys with some, some photographs of a recent project that we did that has a retention pond of similar size. And they actually fill in very nice, the grass on the border and, and inside of there, it actually becomes a, a beautiful habitat. The pond in the project that I'm referring to actually has fish. I don't, I'm not sure how they got there, whether it was a bird that dropped one pregnant fish in there. They have turtles, they have frogs, and it's, it's actually something to see. It's not just a, it's just not a ditch that you would see in maybe a subdivision that has two or three houses where there's not much, much runoff. There's going to be some standing water in there. And with that standing water comes, comes the plant life. And the plant life that birds and other animals actually bring there from other places. So they actually, they look very nice, they're, they're pleasant, and they are, they are not an eyesore at all.
Perfect. My other question, I remember when you first came before us, one of the concerns I had had was with, with the parking. And one of the thoughts I had, obviously, yes, I mean, if I'm a renter, I want a spot and I don't want to wait, especially after coming home from work or, you know, wanting to run into the house quickly or run back out. So it is important to have the, the space available. But I was hoping, you know, and, and one of the things I know that would come down the road is, you know, making sure that if there's a possibility to collaborate and really looking at some form of shuttles for transportation to and from some of the bigger employers in the area. Once again, it's not going to be visual in this concept plan. But one of the things to think of, or I'm hoping that's still in the back of the, the thought process is that there will be some type of thoughts to, you know, consider and really encourage and investigate ways to incorporate the flexibility and the luxury of having the accessibility to have a shuttle to the, you know, the casinos, the naval base, Pfizer, and EB. I, I think that would really serve this property a lot of justice and also help possibly decrease the amount of traffic that neighbor, the neighbors in that area would have to face if just a single shuttle bus was coming through. That could accommodate multiple employees and it also would be good for the environment. So I guess is one of my questions is to restate and hope that that is being considered.
It, it is definitely considered. When we reconfigured the front entryway, the old concept plan had that actual swing off that was labeled the Shuttle Plaza. And maybe I should pull this back up here. On the current iteration, we kind of eliminated that. And we, we made the entryway flow a little better. So previously you came in from here and we had a separate loop here for a shuttle. Now we kind of, if you kind of look at that, there's kind of like a little bit of a flow here to a circle so that a shuttle can pull up. There's, there's benches here, those twig benches that are in, in your packet for people to wait. So a shuttle is something that is definitely considered and is definitely something that is on our radar. And we've made the appropriate changes to, to allow for a shuttle easy access in and out of the site.
Great. I think that's really helpful in looking at what, you know, this may attract as far as, you know, the millennials or, you know, even people that are retired, you know, having that accessibility to utilize different forms of transportation easily. And maybe even on a regular scheduled basis is going to be, I think, quite helpful during the peak hours, morning and evening. So I do appreciate that accommodation and thought process in, into this site plan when looking at this. So, you know, I, I think it's, it's a thought out plan. It's interesting to see it come to, you know, to its final, you know, some of its final phases. And I'm interested to see how the impact will be. I do appreciate the accommodations of the playground and, you know, accommodating the surrounding areas. I do think, you know, as we lose the schools that were, you know, there and that community connection, it's important that we kind of gain, regain some identity back in that area that, you know, that the community has lost. So as much as economic development advances, the town is, you know, important to make sure that some form of asset to that area is, is given back to the surrounding neighbors and giving them some open space to be able to utilize. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Obray? Counselor Obray? You're muted again.
Okay, I'll try again. If anybody's interested in how that is going to look in a little while, if you go down Pleasant Valley South, down a little ways, there's a condo complex that sits up on the side of the hill. I believe it's Thames Heights, been a long time since I sold them. But in front of there, there is a drainage area and it's grown with natural things that just grew, you know, by themselves and it's quite beautiful now. And there's another one out on Route 184, just past Flanders Road on the right-hand side that looks very nice now. So they do come together and, and they become a very, very pleasant part of your site. As always, I'm very excited about this. I think you've done an outstanding job. You've been very patient and provided a lot of information for us. I think this is going to be really, really good for Groton. And there may be some things in the future we have to work out. But I think overall your plan is, is very good. And I thank you for your time and I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
So we have second time hands, but I wanted to offer to Counselor Melendez, Parker, or Zeperry to speak first if they would like.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say I'm happy with the concept. I'm thankful, thank you guys for coming back out.
Yes, same. Thank you for the presentation. I will be supporting the proposal. Thank you.
And Counselors Zeperry, did you wish to speak at all?
We've sort of approved of this as we've been moving along. And I don't see any major changes that would make me feel differently. So I, my feeling is that we should affirm what we started.
And we'll go back to Counselor Franco.
I'm sorry, can you just show me how the, the public will be able to get to the open space areas?
So like I had mentioned before, it's not a, not an extremely walkable site. So what we have, what we are proposing is that we make public parking spaces available. We haven't exactly laid out the, the curb sidewalk area. But the Sealy School Drive, the gated access, although will not be, you cannot drive through it, you will be able to walk through it. So if you wanted to walk onto the site from Sealy School Drive, you'd be able to walk through the gate and onto the sidewalk system within the site. But we will be making public parking spaces available in the lower lot to access those areas.
And just a quick question on this. I don't know, I don't know how you usually do your properties, but would there be security on site?
So there will not be security outside of the site. There will be, the building will have RFID key tags. So at every entry point to the building, you will not be able to get in without that RFID key. And the lobby area will be 24-hour staffed.
All right, thank you. And going back to the retention pond, I did see one at our, our new middle school had one. And they fenced it in. Are you planning to fence this one in?
So I'm going to defer that to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the recommendation of my engineer. The last, the last one that I did, did have a chain link fence around it. It's not a ultra-high chain link fence and it's not a, a ugly gray one. It's actually like a nice, nice black fence. And I believe that my engineer is the same engineer that designed the one in the school. At the moment, right now, a chain link fence is not reflected on the pond. But my gut feeling would be that there will be some sort of a fence. And again, it's going to depend on how much water they anticipate it holding and how steep those grades are going down into that pond.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone has had a chance to speak. So seeing no other hands, I will call for a vote on 2021-20 Sealy School Property Concept Plan Review. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So the opposed is Bumgardner and Bordelon? And abstentions? Okay, so those in favor. Where's my list? Those in favor are Granatoski, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Obray, and Zeperry. Those opposed are Bumgardner and Bordelon and zero abstentions. That motion passes.
Did you forget, you forgot me?
Did I forget to say Parker? Parker's in favor or?
A, in favor.
In favor, thank you. I was reading off my list. Okay, everybody but Bumgardner and Bordelon are in favor, zero abstentions. So seven in favor, two opposed, zero abstentions.
Right.
Great, thank you so much. And again, thank you, Mr. DeJoy for coming out this evening. Thank you for investing in our community and we look forward to, to a good project.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Good night. Good night. All right, so we are on to 2020-608 Coastal Access at Fort Rachel. This is on page 100, and I believe Mr. Reiner is going to give us a brief overview, or is Mr. Burt doing the brief overview? And then we will be going into executive session. And prior to that, we can take a five minute if you, if you so desire. Go ahead, Mr. Burt.
I've actually got Eric Callahan here. As you remember, there was, for quite some time, we've been researching the question of coastal access to the Fort Rachel area. Attorney Callahan is going to give a brief on his opinion so that the public can hear it.
Okay, very good. So we're recognizing Attorney Callahan at this point. Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Burt.
Good evening, everyone. This is Attorney Eric Callahan. So I was asked to analyze whether there's coastal access at 44 Water Street in Mystic. And 44 Water Street is the property that is at the, the southern portion of Water Street where it, where it curves into Fort Rachel Place. It's the property to the south of that. And there is indeed coastal access at that property. It was deeded in 1992. And it, it's only a portion of the property, which is, it's reflected on maps and an easement that was recorded at volume 548, page 840 of the Groton Land Records. That access does not extend all the way to the railroad tracks across, you know, the property to the south. Another question came up as to whether there is a public road at the, at this property that could be used as, as an alternate means of accomplishing coastal access. And there is references to a highway in the chain of title. But we cannot give a title opinion as to whether that is a public road, whether it was ever accepted by the town or not. There's certainly some suggestions that a road was intended to be laid out in 1859. But there are, there are inferences born against there being a public road at the property. So, you know, any resolution of that issue would have to be resolved through court intervention. And that, that's, that's really a brief of, of our research.
That's the public overview. Mr. Burt, did you want to add anything or should I make the motion for executive session?
I think we're okay for the motion.
Okay, Counselor Bordelon has her hand up.
Hi, thanks. So I guess my question, or what you can clarify, is what warrants the executive session part then? I mean, I'm just trying to, I guess I'm trying to understand at this point, what, what really is, you know, needing an executive session is all. Thank you.
There are legal options to explore.
Okay, so I hereby move that the members of the Town Council, Town Manager John Burt, Planning Director John Reiner, Assistant Planning Director Deb Jones, and Attorney Eric Callahan go into executive session pursuant to General Statute Section 1-206E for the purpose of discussing a matter which would result in the disclosure of public records or the information contained therein described, that being an attorney-client communication involving public access to the Fort Rachel area along Mystic River. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Granatoski, seconded by Zeperry. All those in favor of going into executive session for this stated purpose, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Bumgardner, Bordelon, any abstentions? That motion carries seven in favor to oppose Bumgardner, Bordelon, and zero abstentions. It is now 9:39. And we will give Mr. Greeley a chance to get his things organized here. And we'll take a five-minute break and come back for executive session.
As per our rules, it is after 10 o'clock. So in order to proceed, we need to have consensus of the council to proceed on any other items. So we need our rules people. I don't remember if this is a vote or just can, I think it's just consensus. So do we need, is there consensus to continue with review of agenda items and other business? How many would like to continue with review of agenda items and other business? Anybody want to go on?
I'll continue. I'm always up for discussion.
Council Franco, Council Baumgartner, Council Wardlon wish to continue?
I do.
Council Parker.
I'm sorry. One at a time, please. Council Parker?
I was gonna say no.
No, Council Melendez?
Yes.
Council Heed?
I'm saying.
Oh, Council Heed. Okay, so we are on to review of agenda items. We are on to other business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Parker. Who was the second, please? Seconded by Baumgartner. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we are at, what did I say? Seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, okay, seven, right? Seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. It is 10:47. Thank you very much. Be safe everybody, be well, take care. Get some sleep.
Good night.
Good night.